...city residents when working on large city building projects. District nine council member Jan Perry talks about creating employment opportunities for the disenfranchised.
It's very important that as a body we take the necessary actions to ensure that local residents are getting construction jobs created by some of these massive city projects. Local hiring is something we all talk about, from council member Wesson and Garcetti's effort to the retrofitting of green buildings, to the mayor's efforts to provide a steady pipeline of candidates to the trades, from the faith-based initiative. We're striving to create employment opportunities for those who are normally disenfranchised from those opportunities. So today, we're going to take an important step in that direction by authorizing the community development department to commence the economic roundtable study. It is important to establish a nexus between unemployment rates and specific areas of the city, to go beyond the anecdotal, so for that information we know is true and accurate, that this study will create the basis and the foundation to make the findings to require local hiring on city construction jobs.
Council member Bernard Parks says having jobs helps people deal with the core issues of literacy, health, and poverty.
We should be investing in our residents, and it's the best, as I always tell people, the best crime prevention we can do, and I capture Father Boyle's statement, "The best way to stop a bullet is a job." It is very, very true, in that we can find a way that our investment creates job opportunities, job opportunities create. The issue of people dealing with literacy, their health, and eliminating poverty are probably the core issues that we can do the most about. We spend a lot of time and energy on issues that deal with the symptoms of these problems. We go out and we put beds for homeless, we put gang money in for apprehension, but in reality, if we can deal with the issue of the poverty, the issue of literacy, and the issue of health, we will solve most of those symptoms by dealing with the core issues.
District four council member Tom Labange asks staff if these new strategies will be exclusively for Los Angeles residents, to the exclusion of neighboring cities.
What if you live in an unincorporated area next to the city?
Council member John Reamer, Director Bureau of Contract Administration. We do currently have what's called project labor agreements on several projects in departments in the city of Los Angeles. Department of Public Works being the largest with roughly seven working now. The Los Angeles Harbor Department has two. The World Airports has one. And with the airport and the harbor, they have what they call geographical impact zones. So these are areas that have been impacted by the work that takes place at the harbor and the airport.
So someone in Inglewood could be eligible for a job at the airport?
Yes, in those scenarios.
I'm all for LA, but I also understand where our borders are not pure as written in some sphere.
Robert Zein, Assistant General Manager, Community Development Department. We have a cooperative agreement with our county works our centers, and we don't recognize the county-city boundaries, and we mutually refer across county-city lines all the time.
Good, very good. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Albert Nubler.
Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Weezer.
I just want to thank my colleagues, Councilman Perry, Parks, and Wesson, and those of us who've been pushing to address the needs of our youth. For the past three or four years, we've been asking the administration of this, of all our departments, start looking at this notion of hiring youth, creating jobs, not as a courtesy, not as a public relations effort, but a real tangible effort that speaks to accountability. I believe this study will at least give us the basis for which we identify where these populations exist. We know where they are, but we need to be able to justify and support our actions in court, should we be challenged. So the nexus has to be established, and I believe the strength of Councilman Perry's effort is to get us on solid ground for asking, for imposing, for requiring these kinds of efforts. We have tremendous staff that's been working with us. It's about time that we give them the strength and the power to enter an office, whether it be in the city or in the private sector, and say, "These are the folks that you can't hire. Show us how well you've done. Tell us why we should be partners, knowing that you take advantage of our city resources, and this is a way to put forth the type of effort that allows our dollars to recycle within our own economic circles, within our neighborhoods, within our city." So for that, gentlemen, thank you for being there. I know we need to give you more strength, we need to give you more effort in terms of, we need to show more effort in how we can support you, and making sure that you're not walking into these offices with hat in hand, or with your hands open, but actually with a real red pen and say, "This has to get done, this has to get placed in your particular business, and this is how we can hire youth, because they're ready."
Saying that this is long overdue, District fourteen council member Jose Weezer describes "We Build," a similar program used by the Los Angeles Unified School District.
I've talked to you about what the school district did in the midst of the largest public works program in the country, a $16 billion program, building schools in some very low-income neighborhoods. And when we started this program over there, we looked around and said, "Well, wait a minute, we're not involving some of the folks involved in these projects." But we not only saw it as a way to gain meaningful employment to these individuals, but we also saw it as a way to build communities. Because when people build something in their neighborhood, they're proud of it, they're going to protect it, and it's going to build that community. So I think there's lots of benefits by doing this, and I know you will be looking at the "We Build" program, which I championed at the school district, where we got individuals who live locally near the schools, trained at one of our adult ed schools. We put them in an apprenticeship program with one of the unions, and within the first two years, we had 200 individuals living in some very low-income neighborhoods on the job, building schools, and that's a very successful program.
Stating that a job is a pathway out of gangs, Bill Rosendahl asks for a thumbnail sketch of what we're doing.
What do we think? Just give us a quick thumbnail sketch of what we're doing.
Robert Zein, AGM, CDD. What we're doing is actually transforming lives. If you want to hit the nail on the head, we are giving opportunities to our local residents to bid on jobs, to actually have access to the information of when jobs will become available. We're also encouraging our contractors, and actually taking it beyond encouraging. Hopefully, when we do get the local hiring policy in place, is that we will be requiring the contractors to hire from our local residents. We have thousands, and thanks to the great efforts of Councilman Weezer on the "We Build" program, we're training thousands of people throughout our district to fill these jobs within the trade industries. We also are working with the unions to open up the union process for our local residents. Often, folks don't have access to that process, it could be quite daunting for someone who doesn't have any family members within the unions. Currently, through our efforts, we've opened about 250 positions as first-time apprentices through our efforts on the construction side. So on the thumbnail sketch, we are transforming lives.
And as you're transforming, which I think are thousands of people's lives, I keep carrying the cup, homeboy industry, which means a job. A job is a pathway out of gangs. A job is a preventive strategy. It's an intervention strategy. It's the best kind of strategy dealing with young people going forward. When you envision this, will a young man or a woman who goes through the criminal justice system that gets stamped as a felon, how will they be able to participate, and how will they be able to get jobs in this program?
One of the best examples was a Times article that came out about two weeks ago, and the front page of the Metro section had a young man that went through the justice system, who's now working for the ironworkers. We are working directly with the unions, many of them do not have those requirements that weed out.
Saying that this is long overdue, District fourteen council member Jose Weezer describes "We Build," a similar program used by the Los Angeles Unified School District.
I've talked to you about what the school district did in the midst of the largest public works program in the country, a $16 billion program, building schools in some very low-income neighborhoods. And when we started this program over there, we looked around and said, "Well, wait a minute, we're not involving some of the folks involved in these projects." But we not only saw it as a way to gain meaningful employment to these individuals, but we also saw it as a way to build communities. Because when people build something in their neighborhood, they're proud of it, they're going to protect it, and it's going to build that community. So I think there's lots of benefits by doing this, and I know you will be looking at the "We Build" program, which I championed at the school district, where we got individuals who live locally near the schools, trained at one of our adult ed schools. We put them in an apprenticeship program with one of the unions, and within the first two years, we had 200 individuals living in some very low-income neighborhoods on the job, building schools, and that's a very successful program.
Stating that a job is a pathway out of gangs, Bill Rosendahl asks for a thumbnail sketch of what we're doing.
What do we think? Just give us a quick thumbnail sketch of what we're doing.
Robert Zein, AGM, CDD. What we're doing is actually transforming lives. If you want to hit the nail on the head, we are giving opportunities to our local residents to bid on jobs, to actually have access to the information of when jobs will become available. We're also encouraging our contractors, and actually taking it beyond encouraging. Hopefully, when we do get the local hiring policy in place, is that we will be requiring the contractors to hire from our local residents. We have thousands, and thanks to the great efforts of Councilman Weezer on the "We Build" program, we're training thousands of people throughout our district to fill these jobs within the trade industries. We also are working with the unions to open up the union process for our local residents. Often, folks don't have access to that process, it could be quite daunting for someone who doesn't have any family members within the unions. Currently, through our efforts, we've opened about 250 positions as first-time apprentices through our efforts on the construction side. So on the thumbnail sketch, we are transforming lives.
With that, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. If we can reconsider 21.
Watch Council Week in Review for highlights of the week's council meetings, and listen for item numbers associated with those discussions you have an interest in. Then go to the world wide web and listen to those discussions in their entirety using the new City of Los Angeles video on demand feature. Visit the city's website at lacity.org, and just follow the instructions on the screen. Now if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the weekend in June 22, 2007. On behalf of John Worthy and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Hello, I'm Councilmember Wendy Gruel. Ovarian cancer is one of the leading causes of death in American women. Each year, 20,000 women are diagnosed, and nearly 15,000 will die. Our best defense against the dangers of ovarian cancer is early detection. A woman's chance for survival is greater if the cancer is found early. So please, be sure to have your annual physical, a pelvic exam, and a regular blood test. Contact the Ovarian Cancer Coalition for more information on signs and symptoms. Early detection can help save lives.
Emmy award-winning L.A. City View Channel 35. It's all about L.A. In L.A. this week, travelers can expect tighter security at LAX and other U.S. airports.
Thanks for joining us, I'm Ellen Chang.
L.A. Update is the nation's first daily newscast on a municipal station.
Hello, I'm Ellen Chang with your L.A. update. Here's what's making news in the city on this Friday.
Last month, the city's animal cruelty task force seized 17 fighting dogs.
Talk shows that talk the talk.
Welcome to L.A. Roundtable.
Welcome to Council Week in Review.
I'm Mary Grady for the Los Angeles Police Department.
Hi, I'm Brett Palmer-Anson. Welcome to the Neighborhood Cafe.
With over a dozen original series programs for city departments.
Luckily, they defused it. There were like, something like 25 squad cars there.
Award-winning PSAs.
Pull to the right!
Save it, buddy, the ball call.
The average car weighs 6,000 pounds. The average bicycle with rider weighs 170 pounds, give or take a few. And if the two collide, bug splatter.
Live gavel-to-gavel city council meetings and commission coverage.
Now it's time for general public comment. All of these are items that are not formally on the agenda.
Recognizing a cargo theft's been a crime that would impact the free flow of commerce within the Port of Los Angeles.
Thought-provoking, historical and cultural programming.
The Los Angeles basin was the most prolific agricultural area within America.
When William first arrived and saw the dry, dusty little town, population 9,000, he was not impressed.
Live events as they're happening, seen only on L.A. City View Channel 35.
And the rockets, red glare.
You can see the dignitaries are arriving from 43 countries, and we see the Secretary of State Warren Christopher.
Innovative and cutting-edge.
Welcome to your LAFD in action.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to City Works.
The EAD is also making it possible for agencies such as the Park Rangers and others to purchase bicycles to use in self-control operations.
My name is Jeanette Bolden. I am the Women's Hair Track and Field Coach at UCLA.
Shows with impact that will affect your life.
Hanging with the homies, slinging drugs, doing drugs, doing time.
L.A. City View Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Need a recycling center? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
L.A. City View Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, the 27th of June 2007. We're here in John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday of the month, of the week, excuse me, except for the first Friday of the month in which we meet out in Van Nuys City Hall. We welcome our viewers on Channel 35, L.A. City View, which broadcasts all of our council meetings live on Channel 35 through the city's cable system and rebroadcasts it in the evening. We also welcome our viewers via the Internet at lacity.org, where you can click on the links and watch live streaming webcast video of our council meetings. And our most recent feature, you can also pull down video on demand of our past council meetings and look at some of our past video through the Internet as well. Finally, if you're not close to a television or a computer, you can always call in using Council Phone, which is a service of the City of Los Angeles, which you can listen via audio to the proceedings of any of our committee meetings or the full council by calling 213-621-CITY. Again, that's 213-621-CITY. Our agendas are available also online at lacity.org, as well as through the City Clerk's Office and here in Council Chambers, where we have council ambassadors in the back, local high school students who help us navigate the ins and outs of our council meetings, and our city clerk here to the side. If you'd like to speak on any of the items that are on our agenda, items that have not yet had a public hearing require a public hearing here in council. If you would like to fill out a speaker card, please do so and give it to one of the sergeants at arms, and we'd be happy to hear your comments. Also, if there is general public comments you'd like to give on items that are under our jurisdiction but are not on the agenda formally, those two are available in the back, and you just fill out a speaker card and give it to the sergeants at arms. I want to thank council members that are here, pursuing to council rules on time, council members Zine, Smith, Rosendahl, Weezer, and Gruel. We are awaiting a few other members. We will be at a bare quorum, 10 members, so if we could encourage council members who are not yet with us, Councilmember Labange, Councilmember Parks, if you'll please join us, and Councilmember Weiss and Wesson. Mr. Reyes is excused today, as is Ms. Hahn, Mr. Cardness, and Mr. Alarcon. So again, if council members, sorry, Councilmember Labange, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Weiss, and Wesson will join us. We appreciate everybody's patience in the meantime, and we will start shortly. Thank you. Thank you again to council members Gruel, Weezer, Perry, Rosendahl, Smith, and Zine. We are now at seven members, awaiting three more. Councilmember Labange, if you'll join us, Councilmember Parks, if you'll join us, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. If you'll come as soon as possible, we'll begin the meeting. Thank you again, and we hope to see you soon. It's the third quorum call for Councilmember Labange, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. If you'll please make your way to Council Chambers as soon as possible. Again, Councilmember Labange, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Weiss, Councilmember Wesson, we are awaiting your presence to begin the meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Parks, for joining us. So just leave Mr. Weiss, Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Labange. Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Here's our final quorum call for Councilmembers Weiss. We can inform Mr. Wesson he's on his way and a couple minutes behind, but Mr. Weiss and Mr. Labange, we need both of you in Council Chambers. This is a final quorum call. We can't establish a quorum. We will continue the matters till Friday. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardness, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Mr. Zine seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weezer moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved. At the outset, let me, just before we run through the agenda, pass on, colleagues, to you that I know Mr. Zine had been in touch as well with Mr. Norm Langer, and yesterday, when we adjourned the council in memory of Al Langer, the founders of Langer's Deli, that Norm Langer and the family wanted to express to the council their gratitude for our thoughts and for adjourning the council yesterday in his memory. So wanted to pass that on. Also, I know we'll be hearing from him in a second, but wanted to welcome Councilmember Mike Wu to Council Chambers. Nice to see you and to have you in Council Chambers as well. And so with that, let's run through the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, would you like to go through public comments at this time?
No, let's run through the agenda, please.
Okay. Mr. President, we have requests to consider. Item number 10, the applicant requests continuance to August 8, '07.
Okay. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing item number 10 till the 8th of September? If not, so ordered. Next items?
Mr. President, there is also a request for item number 32 to refer that matter back to Public Works Committee.
Okay. Colleagues, item number 32, is there any objection to sending that back to Public Works? It's okay? Okay? So ordered. Yes, Ms. Gruel? Okay, hold on, what's that? We're about to start running through the ones, but number 20, I'll make sure we call special for you. Next items?
Items number 1 through 11, with the exception of 10, are items noted for public hearing. Items 1 through 9 are street lighting ordinance, while item number 11 is a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 13. The recommendation for this council action is to grant the application, and a motion is required.
I will move that on that item. And on item 1 and 11, we have cards, so we'll call those special. And on 2 through 9, we will open and close the public hearing on those. Anybody wishing to call any of those special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
While that got a majority vote, those will carry over, since we do not have 12 members today, for a second reading next week. Next items, please.
Items number 12 through 30 and number 48 on the continuation agenda are items which public hearings have been held. Items number 12 and through 15 are confirmations of city officials. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold the commissioner nominations on the desk, please, and call 20 special for Ms. Gruel. Are there specials? Mr. Parks? 17 for Mr. Parks. Mr. Rosendahl?
Do you continue until the 6th?
Until the 6th of July?
Yeah.
Okay. If there's no objection, 22 will continue till the 6th of July, Mr. Rosendahl. Are there specials, Mr. Smith?
25.
25 for Mr. Smith. Mr. Zine, do you have special? Okay. All right. So with that, we have on 27, 28, 29, and 30, we have two reports on file for each of those. Do those conflict, Madam Clerk, or can we move both of them on those?
You may move both of those.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move on 27 through 30, both reports. Oh, 30 special, Mr. -- okay, sorry. Mr. Zine will call 30 special, 27 through 29 will move both reports. And with that, let's go ahead and open the roll. On the bounce, close the -- oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Labange? Which one?
19, is that correct, did you say? 19 and 26. I apologize.
Okay, no problem. Mr. Labange will take off 19 and 26 for Mr. Labange. And are we okay on the bounce, Madam Clerk, to open the roll? Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All of those are approved, except for 16, which will carry over for one week due to fewer than 12 members on an ordinance. Next items, please.
Next items are items 31 through 42, with the exception of 32, are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. I do not see cards, except on 41. So we'll call that special for cards from the public. And if we can go ahead on the bounce, anybody wishing to call any of those special? Special items?
Mr. President, for item number 31, we are waiting for an announcement from the CAO.
Okay, let's hold that on the table. That leaves 33 through 40 and 42, colleagues. Anybody wishing to call any of those special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are 43 and 44, and those are closed session items. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Yes, let's hold those on the desk for closed session. Next, if we can recess the regular meeting and call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Alarcon, Cardness, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. Colleagues, anybody wishing to call any of those special? 45, 46, and 47, I think 46 and 47 are closed session items, so why don't we go ahead and hold those on the table? And we do have a card for 45, so we'll call that special for cards from the public as well. If we can continue this back to the regular agenda and go to the continuation items?
Mr. President, the continuation item was heard already.
Is -- excuse me, what? We have item 48, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So 48 before us? Yes? Okay. Anybody wishing? And we have a card for 48, so we'll call that special. That's a continuation before. Yep. All right. And that's the full agenda. We'll return to public comment now, this time. I'd like to invite forward for general public comment on items that are not on our agenda but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction, Glenn Doris Boone. And each speaker will have two minutes. We have a timer there on the podium to help people guide their comments. Glenn Doris Boone here?
Good morning.
Would you move the microphone down? Thank you very much, Mr. Down.
Good morning to the council. My name is Glenn Doris Boone. I've had many ups and downs with the City Council, with the City of Los Angeles, with the REAP program. I'm here to ask you to please get my property out of REAP, or the man's going to close -- I have a foreclosure letter in my hand. He will foreclose unless I get out of REAP in the next five days. And the REAP program is -- The program for the REAP is to be heard here in this day to release properties from the REAP, the 4017 Country Club Drive. I've had eminent domains, I've had all kinds of things against the property and against me, and it has broke me. I'm here to ask you your help. I need your help this morning to get me out of REAP. REAP has destroyed my business, my finances, my home is all mixed in it. The one building at 4017 Country Club Drive has just drained me of everything I have. The city has not responded with me at all. I do thank Mr. Lipton. I thank Attorney Ken Cambarra from the City Council and the City Attorney's Office, but I need help to prevent this foreclosure on my property. Because I've been in that REAP since 2003, it's too long. I have complied to all the rules. They held me up on a count of 31 meters that were not connected. Three whole years, I could not do anything. Now I'm asking help to get out of REAP, so I don't lose this property. My name is Glenn Boone, and I'm talking about 3277 REAP number. Thank you kindly.
Thank you very much. And we'll look up your address and see if we can get the appropriate council office to be in discussion with you. You'll just hang out there for a second. Our next public comment speaker is Sharon Brewer out in Van Nuys. We can go out to Van Nuys. Good morning, Ms. Brewer. Hold on, there you go. We'll give you a few extra seconds, don't worry.
Hi. It was like I was dashing. A little more warning would be very helpful. Sharon Brewer, Encino Neighborhood Council election, June 28, 2007, tomorrow. I have before me the Neighborhood Council election procedures approved by the Los Angeles City Council on January 25, 2005. And under the -- on page 9, it says that the following schedule will be used to facilitate the review and approval of election procedures. Number 4 says the finalized election procedures must be approved by Dunn no later than 90 days prior to the designated election day, which was March 31, 2007. 5, the finalized election procedures must also be adopted by the interim or elected Neighborhood Council governing board in a publicly noticed meeting no later than 60 days before the scheduled election. That date would have been April 30, 2007. As I've stated before, Encino Neighborhood Council has not approved any election procedures since their initial ones approved January 24, 2007. Also, I have a communication from the chair of the Election Committee that, with a letter that was sent from Dunn dated April 1, saying that this letter is in response to Encino Neighborhood Council procedures for 2006 received by the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, and after reviewing them, that the procedures -- the independent election administrator for the election has concluded that procedures meet the requirements set forth for the Neighborhood Council election that's supposed to be held on June 28, '07. Again, it says 2006. For an election that's 2007, it also says that the Neighborhood Council needs to finalize the approvals by April 29. This election needs to be postponed.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Our next speaker is here in Council Chambers, Oscar Johnson. Is that next speaker?
Morning, sir. Councilmember, my name is Oscar Johnson. I'm proactive for the homeless in the City of Los Angeles, and I continue to come to the City Council meeting, and it seems as though in the last 30 years in our country, our country have fallen into something like entertainment, negative entertainment, seeming as though we are people waiting for someone to tell us some fun and make us laugh. And there's no laughing matter for what's going on today with human life that is being destroyed in America, in Los Angeles, and all over this country, through our political system, that has eliminated African-Americans from this, from our political decisions. We live in a community, but we have no kind of decision of which direction our community is going. We let foreigners come in this country, and they come, majority illegal immigrants come to America, they come around African-American peoples, and they sit up in their community. You don't take them in the Caucasian American community and sit up in your community, because that's what you think of us. We don't suppose to be independent-minded people, do independent thinking. And I see our district attorney office and our police department, if we had united, if we were united enough in Los Angeles, we can recall Chief Branton. Chief Branton needs to be recalled, because he is far away from doing his obligations for what he is sworn to do. Because numerous occasions, the policeman ride up and down by my house trying to intimidate me. You know, I walk out my door, the police standing in front of my door numerous times. And but yet it's still the district attorney, and the policeman cannot do unsolved murders in Los Angeles. Eighty-five ninety cents murders is unsolved. They get the money, get the resource to do it, and have the manpower to do it, but they just don't do it, I guess, because they feel like there's no one over them to make them do it. The district attorney and the people in law say that, I guess, we are above the law, but I think our constitution should read that we, the people, know. But we have been excluded from our, from our lawmaking decisions through our political -- that people in office represent us. They get information, we hope the information that we need, but they make their decision in their secret, in their secret chambers, and bring out their decision to the public and push it down our throat and tell us this rule that you should live by.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. If I could ask our sergeants-at-arms for assistance, and if I could ask folks, there's a number of conversations happening in the sides, just to keep your comments to a minimum, or if you can take them behind chambers or outside, please. I believe it's Felix Cordona, is that correct? I can't quite read. Felii Cordona? I'm sorry, is it Felix, sir? If you'd just state your name for the record, excuse me for, if I butchered it.
Two minutes isn't enough, but I wanted to say, I was going to talk about the --
What's your name, sir? Just so we can -- is it Felix Cordona?
Yeah.
Okay, got you. Go ahead.
I wanted to talk about the May 1 demonstration. I was there when it happened. Now I know Chief Branton is thinking that they think the marchers did it, they didn't. The police, I was over there by Parkview and Wilshire, I was standing there watching them coming up on Wilshire. Then all of a sudden, from Parkview, about 50 or 60 police come in, marching, and their sticks and all that, they want to, like they want to beat them. Marchers kept coming up, and cops were just moving their sticks like they want to hit somebody. And the leader of the marchers came up, talked to them, they didn't say nothing. So they tried to stop the marchers, the marchers couldn't stop, so they turned them into the park. And then there were some on the bottom, they're wondering what's going on. Nobody said nothing. So the marchers kept coming up, and cops acted like Nazis coming, waiting and waiting. And then they had a white truck, a speaker truck in the back. Nobody used it. So here comes the cops, the ones with the motorcycles, because they came through, the ones are, the police are standing right there, they came through, started pushing the motorcycles against the people. And they weren't, nobody was hearing, nobody, they were just trying to push, push. Finally, the police got out their sticks, started beating them, and then they ran, was wondering what was going on. So they went down to Alvarado and Wilshire. They're trying to, marches trying to march to there, the police stopped them. So nobody was throwing bottles, the only bottle I saw was plastic. After 15, 20 minutes getting beaten, the people throw a bottle at them, and that's plastic. And I don't want to say more, but that's about it.
Thank you, sir. The next meeting of our task force on the May 1 incident will be next week. Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weiss, the chairs of that, are, I think, nailing down the date, but if you check at our lacity.org calendar or consult the Clerk's Office, they'll give you a chance to speak more about that. So we can, I'll have somebody come and talk to you about how you can find out that information for next week.
11 more time downstairs, or what?
I'm sorry, that'll be a committee meeting separately. I believe it's going to be near MacArthur Park. But I'll have somebody come talk to you. Michael Hunt is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. I'm the pirate outlaw, Mike Hunt. Name's not required, a cross-examination. I don't know why we're cross-examining people, but I want to give my shout-outs, first of all, to the other outlaws, the newest one, Paris Hilton. She knows what it's like now to be released from custody. So come down to City Hall, Paris, and you can bring the helicopters and all the units and all the other resources that we're wasting, following you around everywhere. I want to know why yesterday's meeting didn't come up on the web. I really wanted to check the on-demand web service from the city. It normally comes up straight away. I missed that, and I really wanted to see what happened to ZoomaDog. I heard the ratings were up. They were huge. Apparently, yeah, it's all the talk of the town. Eric Garcetti's becoming more and more famous day by day with that association. And, you know, good or bad, it's, let's just ride it while it's going, right? Now the serious business, Oscar Johnson. Forever and ever, it seems, still, Dennis Zine, I want him to continue with that liaison thing. Where's the guy who, like, talks to these people and just gets something rolling, you know, so that they're not just here every day like we were forever and ever, you know, the same old thing? Let's just get that person who intercepts, you know? I want to talk about this guy who just had public comment about May 1, and Chief Branton slides through with a reappointment right in the middle of the investigation. Branton slides through with a reappointment right in the middle of the investigation. It's like one smokescreen after another. We got the mayor, and then he needs to put up the rocky smokescreen so the media's on him, they let Paris out. It's like a big, it is a big circus, and we weren't even in that one. The graffiti mitigation's not working, that new Venice wall, I was down there yesterday morning, and there's graffiti all over the stores, and they just hit the merchants, it's strange, they don't hit the houses or anything, but...
Thank you, Mr. Doug. And just as a point of information, we do have, beginning with the new fiscal year, the position in the city clerk's office to do some of that interaction, that was something included in the budget. I don't know if they'll have somebody hired by the first, but it's in this year's fiscal year. Mr. Hunt, would you like to speak next?
Today, I'm at Dow, and I'm here to talk about the city and its policy, and its policy in listening. We've been down here for approximately about a year and a half, and we asked you guys to listen to us. And just listen is the key to what we're saying. When you don't listen to the people who put you in office, then we have to revert to court and things like that, and we really hate that. When we first came down here, we tried to reason with the city council and the city council members of the board and things like that. We tried to express how you guys were violating our first, our fourth, our fifth, and fourteenth amendment. Nobody wanted to hear that. It's ways that you listen. I like to welcome our latest outlaw, he said it was Paris Hilton, but it's actually Steve In this matter, we would like to convene with you guys, and we would like to sit and talk with city council about listening. Listening is what you hear, you know, and then it's how you take it and then make it all happen. So on that note, I just really want you guys to listen to Oscar Johnson, all the people that's talking to you guys, so that you guys understand what we're saying, and know that if you're African-American, if you're Hispanic, if you're Angloid, you know, or if you're Sweden, you know, that you're being heard and not just laughed about, about what we're saying. Mr. Garcetti, I want to see you still sit as president. That's just my opinion, you know, and, you know, I don't think you did a bad job, I don't think you did a good job, I think you did an adequate job. So...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Allering. Excuse me if I mispronounced that as well, is it Allering? Is that right?
Allering.
Allering, excuse me.
Council President Garcetti, honorable members of the Los Angeles City Council, I'm here today to express great concern regarding the health of democracy in the city of Los Angeles. As you may know, recently, there has been a cloud of scandal hovering around the city attorney's office. City Attorney Delegate DIO is currently facing a city ethics commission investigation and a separate investigation from the State Bar of California. These investigations likely will not go far enough to ensure that justice is served in our city. Without justice, our democracy is hard. The serious allegations against Mr. Delegate DIO regarding the use of his city-issued vehicle and the use of city employees to conduct personal business and babysit amount to a misappropriation of the city's funds. This misappropriation of funds can be better described as theft from the city's treasury. Theft is a criminal offense under penal code. Depending upon the amount of the theft, the crime may rise to the felony level. When a public official violates that public trust, they should resign or be removed from office. Council, you are charged with guarding the public's trust. Therefore, I ask that you pass a resolution requesting District Attorney Cooley to investigate Mr. Delegate DIO's likely criminal conduct and file appropriate charges. If Mr. Cooley will not investigate the city attorney, then this council should ask the Attorney General to investigate. Half a world away, some of the city's poorest residents are fighting and dying for democracy in Iraq while Mr. Delegate DIO steals from our treasury. This is an insult to our city, our country's judicial system, and to American democracy. I issue this challenge. Mr. Delegate DIO, honor our democracy and those fighting for democracy in Iraq by resigning immediately. If you do not resign, I will spearhead your recall from office. In my hand, I have a recall petition for Sheriff Lee Baca. Mr. Delegate DIO, please don't force me to draft your recall petition, honor democracy and own up to your conduct and resign from your office. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is out in Van Nuys, Miriam Fogler, and after that will be William Morrison back here in council chambers. Good morning, Ms. Fogler.
Good morning. Problem is that the people are undivided here, I see that, everybody's got their own specific public comment, whatever, whoever's doing wrong, but the guy we were talking about last speaker, you know, you gotta watch these people, watchdogs, and to let the public know and keep them informed and let them know not to vote for the people back in office. The first thing I want to say is that there's somebody that's gonna be up for reappointment here for the city planning, and he's responsible for Prop H that was passed twenty-five years ago when he was sitting here on the city council. And he had some problems, and he couldn't be really elected, people didn't like him, and the city council...
Sir, ma'am, we have to have general public comment, that's an item that's a little bit later in the agenda, so...
Well, and just telling you, talking about Proposition H was his dealing with the salaries tied to the county municipal judges, which you're not gonna be accountable to the city people, the voters here in the city of Los Angeles. So you automatically get a pay raise every year, no questions asked, nobody has to scrutinize it, nobody questions your job, you know, your qualifications, how well you're doing your job, you know, whatever. But the city employees, they're under the same jurisdiction as you, and yet you do that to them. Why can't they have their calls every year and have their cost of living? They need at least a six percent now, every year, to catch up with the cost of living, it's very bad out there. And I'm talking about everybody who works for the city. So what I'm saying is that this Michael Wu needs to be, not to be reappointed, because he's the one that has caused nothing but problems for our city here on the city planning, a lot of problems we're having here with the planning department. Now, also, I want to say this today about the Iran thing, oh, I ran out of time, but I just want to say is that we need to be backing up some Iranians who don't approve of the government of Iran. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Our last speaker is William Morrison, here in council chambers. Good morning, Mr. Morrison.
All right, Mr. Garcetti, thank you very much. Actually, I'm not too sure here of any of the council members around this square. My cousin passed away last Monday on June eighteenth in Council District Thirteen by a hit-and-run drunk driver, which this kid was twenty years old that hit my cousin, my cousin was thirty-seven years old, and died on the way to the hospital to go on a senior side night. Unfortunately, I know like a lot of businesses over in Hollywood that are liquor businesses do sell liquor to minors, underage, underage individuals, and this needs to stop. They labeled my cousin as a transient, in which case they should have taken him to the nearest hospital, they took him to senior side night, in which case it should have been to a nearest hospital within the area of Hollywood in Sunset and La Brea. He died at one fifty-three in the morning on the eighteenth. And I want a memorance of him, his name was Robert Czesek, and this is one thing, I know that one of the items that's coming up in today's council chamber, we better start looking at the items very carefully before we give liquor license to any of these businesses throughout our city. And I feel on item number eleven, we better really look at that item very, really carefully today. I don't think any of these businesses that are selling liquor, I already know that most of them do sell to minors behind closed doors, and we better start investigating that. And the healthcare issue, whichever hospital's doing good business with the city of L.A., like Kaiser should have taken in my cousin at that present time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. We're working very closely with the police, not only on that case, but also on some of the underage drinking. I'll be happy to have somebody come talk to you about this specific incident, see if we can assist. That closes our public comment for today. If we can return to the items that we called special, starting with the commissioners, please. Before that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Labange for an introduction of some very honored guests we have here in council chambers.
Well, I know, Mr. President, I think you would like to do this and join me in celebration as the representative of Thai Town in Los Angeles, which I am right adjacent to it, but we have a very special delegation from Bangkok and Thailand here, and we all want to ask a very great John Feral Chamber welcome to the leader of the delegation, Santi Villa Asay Don Tant. Please give him a great, strong welcome. And all our members and friends from Bangkok, please stand and be welcomed by the Los Angeles City Council. Thank you. They will be touring City Hall, including some of the communication centers, the traffic centers, and also go to the Tom Bradley Tower. So we certainly welcome you here, and we also stand in support for the people of Thailand for that terrible tsunami that affected the region some years ago, and we want you to know we send our love. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange, and sawadika. Nice to see everybody here, and we welcome you to council chambers from our city of angels to your city of angels, Bangkok, very much. Appreciate you being here. Thank you very much. And with that, we can return to the commissioners that we have before us, starting with number, if we take twelve and thirteen together, please.
Item number twelve and thirteen are commission appointments. Item number twelve is the appointment of Ms. Lark Galloway Gilliam to the Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families, and item thirteen is Michelle Segura to the Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families.
If we can have both the nominees come forward to the table, and like to recognize the Chair of our Arts Parks Committee, Mr. Tom Labange.
I thank you, these are two great selections on behalf of the mayor's office, which makes these selections here in our department, Children, Youth, and Family. Just briefly, if you could both express your passion and why you want to serve the city of Los Angeles.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for this opportunity to serve the city of Los Angeles. I have been on the commission for a couple of years now and really excited about the opportunity to be reappointed. I have served as the chairperson for the last year. I'm on this commission because I believe that we have an obligation and an opportunity to ensure that the young people in our community, the children, are afforded the opportunity to live and grow up healthy in this, in this city of ours. And my goal in serving on this commission is to really work with the city council and mayor to establish a policy here in the city of Los Angeles that ensures that children have the kind of support that they are, that they need.
Well, hello, my name is Michelle Segura, and first of all, it is definitely an honor for me to be sitting here today and, you know, approaching this wonderful opportunity. And as you just said, I also believe that it is an important task and really a challenge for the city of Los Angeles to engage its youth, which is obviously an important voice of the community and the larger Los Angeles community as well. So I'm honored again to represent that youth voice on the commission. I would serve as the youth commissioner. I've been involved with the L.A. City Youth Council for approximately two years now. I'm currently serving as the interim vice president, and I'm also the appointed youth representative for Council District One, Ed Reyes. But, you know, aside from that, I am a youth in Los Angeles, obviously. I recently graduated from Immaculate Heart High School, I will be attending USC this next year. And really what it comes down to for me is just a belief in people, and, you know, it may come off as perhaps naive or idealistic, but it is a genuine dedication and a commitment to the people of Los Angeles. You know, I really love L.A., I love the neighborhood I grew up in, and I see it as an important challenge to me personally as well, to see how I can reach out to other youth in Los Angeles, and this is one step forward in that direction.
Thank you both very much, Mr. Labange.
Great, and I'm so proud, especially of the youth council member here who went to St. Thomas Elementary School on Pico and also Immaculate Heart High School, and is gonna go next year to the University of Southern California, USC, so we have someone who's right, very involved. Strong recommendations for unanimous vote on these very fine appointments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Ms. Brewer is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to stand up and congratulate both of you, and wonderful that you're continuing your efforts on the Children, Youth, and Families, and it is a critical part, and this is an exciting time, I think, at Children, Youth, and Families with our new permanent executive director, and some of the programs and coordination, and I think working with other city departments, this is gonna be a great year, so your leadership and willingness to serve, I appreciate you very much. And as a youth member, I know Tom Labange and Ed Reyes and I, you may have mentioned that, and Mark Lee Thomas, all served on a different version, but the mayor's youth council at the time. So if you want to go into politics, there is a place for you, I think. But it is critical to hear your voice about what the young people are thinking, what kinds of programs we should be offering, what kinds of issues this council should be addressing. And so I'm glad you're willing to serve on the, on the youth council, it was a great experience for me, and I know it will be for you. So just a thank you and I vote as well.
All right. Thank you very much, colleagues. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll and the nominations, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Have a nice.
Congratulations. Round of applause for commissioners. Everything will be forthwith this entire week. Congratulations. Next nominee, please.
The next nominee is item number fourteen, and that is Ms. Gail Garnier Rosky to Cultural Affairs Commission.
Okay, Ms. Rosky, if you'd please join us, and again, like to recognize Chair of our Arts Parks Health and Aging Committee, Mr. Tom Labange.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President, and as Commissioner Rosky is seated here, we have a great commissioner here has passion for the arts, an artist herself in her own right, who does great work, but is passionate and has really helped focus the department more in this transitional period, which we've been under with the change in command and the new general manager waiting full-time assignment here in the next few weeks. Commissioner Rosky, thank you for your service to the city of Los Angeles, you are a very special person and a, and a great artist. Just give us a little passion and a reminder what we members have to do more for the arts.
Well, I'm thrilled to be a commissioner again, probably especially because Al Nadal is our president of our commission, and I really believe in Al. My vision for our city is to see public art everywhere in this city, especially temporary public art. I'm very interested in getting this, the ball rolling on public art. Other cities have found the value of that. I want our city to really find. I was chairman of the largest public art project, which was the Angel Project, and I really believe we have some great ideas, and hopefully the city council will help us to see those ideas come to fruition. Thank you.
Good. Ms. Rosky, thank you very much. Members, I ask for a strong I vote, and very beautiful...
Mr. Smith is next. Hold tight, Ms. Rosky, we've got Mr. Smith and then Ms. Brewer who want to say some comments.
I just, you didn't also state, and I want to put on the record, that besides your strong passion for the arts, that you've endowed the University of Southern California, and a building is named in the arts department after you because of your strong commitment. I think that's something people need to know, that you've really invested your own personal wealth and time in the arts, and you give it back to the city of L.A. in this commission. When you talk about the Angel program, I think that was one of the more exciting art programs in all L.A.'s history, probably. So many people got involved and excited about it, are you thinking something along that lines, or maybe Angels Two or something?
Well, we did, you know, we did two years of Angels, and I really think that that's one project, but I think there's some others that we should strive for. What, what my goal is, is to get, we have the largest art community in Los Angeles, and it's very diverse. All kinds of art is being made in this city. I would love to see a project that could really include all of those different modalities. For instance, our contemporary artists down in Venice don't really communicate with our traditional landscape artists, for instance. What about doing a project where all of them are going to compete to decorate our city in a temporary way, that we would all be able to enjoy, not only from a walking position, but maybe a drive-by position? There's all kinds of possibilities, and, and I'm working on it.
Okay. Well, I'm very excited about your reappointment, and I think with Al Nadal there, it's a great team. One thing I've asked you to do, and I've complained about this in the budget process, we have a program where we give grants to artists to provide art. The problem is, we're giving city revenues to people who do art that, A, may not live in the city of L.A., and B, may not give their art back to the city of L.A. And I've asked the department to say, why are we giving grants to people out of L.A., why are we giving grants to people that do not benefit L.A.? I think we need to stop that practice, and I hope you'll take a look at that, that those artists and residents programs are really for Los Angeles residents and Los Angeles art. And I hope you'll take a good look at that.
Oh, I definitely think you're correct, and I was in charge of the art for the cathedral, and in choosing artists for the cathedral, we really looked at using, well, it wasn't city... we really looked at using, well, it wasn't city, but it was California artists. We have, every piece of art in there was designed by a local artist. That's really important, that we support our own. And we have enough. We don't need to go anywhere else.
Thank you very much, and good luck. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grul.
I'll let you know right after the vote. If you stay at the table, I'll let you know after the vote when it's done. Ms. Grul. I wanted to also stand up and thank Gail, and we had a chance to chat a little bit beforehand, and about an exciting time in the cultural affairs department with the new general manager and Al being there. Who, talking about during his tenure, really thought outside the box and pushed the envelope and said, how can we look at the cultural diversity of the city and support it in so many ways? And I think, as Mr. Smith mentioned, particularly those that are residing in L.A., to support them in that effort and to really have the city be a cultural partner, which we've been like the stepsister participant, and we need to step up to the plate. And I think all of you can come back to us and say, here's what we can do in the city of Los Angeles, more than you've ever done before. And so I think the ideas of how we can start getting people to think about what's happening in the rest of the city and to be able to go to different parts of the city. So I want to thank you for your willingness to serve again in your busy schedule. And I didn't realize how involved you were in the USC, and I'm a Bruin, but I'll still vote for you, Gail, anyway. But thank you very much for your leadership.
Well, thanks very much, Wendy, and thanks for your offer to help, too. Appreciate that.
And she's wearing a color that applies to both schools, so I think we're safe. So with that, let's go ahead and open the roll and the nomination, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Congratulations. If we can move to our last nominee.
Last commission appointment is Mr. Michael Wu to City Planning Commission.
Thank you. I know, Mr. Reyes, the Chair of Plum, is excused, so he couldn't be here today, but let me just say that it's been a great pleasure to have Mr. Wu on the planning commission, somebody who comes to us as a, I think, the first member of this body who is a trained planner. Mr. Reyes certainly follows in those footsteps, but as somebody who's followed in your footsteps as well, we really appreciate the perspective that you brought, many of them ahead of their time in the Hollywood areas and throughout the city. And he certainly have applied that and wanted to give you the opportunity to say something to the body and to the public before, and then we'll see if anybody else would like to add some good wishes as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. The City Planning Commission is at the epicenter of many of the toughest challenges facing Los Angeles going into the future. So whether it's where will people live, what kinds of jobs we'll have, what will neighborhoods be like, these issues are very troubling, but at the same time, we welcome these challenges. So I'm very grateful for the opportunity to serve on this commission, to work with Gail Goldberg and the staff of the department, as well as my fellow commissioners, to try to help address these issues. And we're very grateful that this council has approved a budget for the department, enabling the department to hire a lot more people to be able to start to more effectively address these challenges. So I'm very grateful for having this opportunity, if you decide to vote to confirm me, and look forward to working with you as we address these challenges together.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wu. And I know we have Councilmember Rosendahl who'd like to add a few words as well. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Michael.
Good morning.
Your experience as a council member, candidate for mayor, and now a leader in the planning department, could you just reflect on your experience on the department right now and the transition it's going through and some of the main issues you see going forward?
Well, Mr. Rosendahl, when I was in your place, I remember having the feeling that the planning department was burdened with many responsibilities, but that in many ways in those days, the department tended to be undervalued, it tended to be underestimated. I think that members of the council and other elected officials tended to look elsewhere within the city bureaucracy for solutions to problems. Today, I think there's been an enormous difference. I think that the leadership of Gail Goldberg and other leadership from the staff has really helped to reinvigorate the department, perhaps in some ways that actually increased the workload and increased the expectations of the planning department. So it's sort of a case of glass half-full and glass half-empty. But I'm really happy to see that the planning department really has been stepping up to this challenge, trying to respond not just to council motions, but the larger issues that are being raised by the mayor, by the general public. And so I think there's been a big change between what I was used to 15 or 20 years ago and the condition and the capability of the city planning department today.
I appreciate that. That's positive, and I like positive, optimistic comments. My district, the 11th district, you're familiar with it, has a big issue. The issue is, how do we keep middle class, working class, and poor classes in the 11th district? It's just becoming a high-end district. Everybody wants to live near the beach. How do we preserve the affordable housing, of which 50% of my constituents are renters? When I first came on this job, I'll never forget, one of the city attorneys said, there's nothing you can do about Lincoln Place, as they were chaining these people and tearing them out of their apartments and really destroyed a whole quality of life there because of this Ellis Act business. And frankly, as you and I both know, if somebody sees a nice apartment building and they announce they're getting out of the rental business, they throw the people out, no matter how old they are or whatever the story is. Good news is, we've upped their relocation monies, but it's still not enough. You can't live in the 11th district. Rental is too high, and my housing stock every day gets threatened by condo conversions. Any thoughts about that issue?
Well, Mr. Rosendahl, you're asking a very tough question, and one which applies not only in the 11th district, but actually throughout the city of L.A. It's a citywide problem. The general answer I'll give you, without getting into specifics, is I think there are two things that need to be done in general. One is to maintain and protect as much of the affordable housing that currently exists. That means taking action to act against demolition and to protect the existing stock. And then second, to be more aggressive throughout the city in terms of promoting new construction of affordable and market rate units. Because I believe that the estimate citywide of the shortfall of housing units is amazing. It is dramatic. My understanding is, according to SCAG estimates, over the next eight years, this city will need about 114,000 new housing units built in order to keep up with the demand. But as you know, we're lucky when we're able to get somewhere between 7,000, 8,000, or 9,000 new units per year built. So we're looking at a potential shortfall over the next eight years of as many as maybe 30,000 or 40,000 units. So how should we get them? How can we create these? So again, it comes back to, I think, the two basic principles, which is do everything you can to protect the existing supply of housing, and then second, be very aggressive and creative promoting housing with incentives such as rezoning, density bonuses, other ways of squeezing in more units, because it's an important, it's one of the most crucial citywide challenges we face.
Prop H, which was defeated unfortunately by a couple of points, you have to have two-thirds vote, which is ridiculous. It's really the tyranny of the minority over the democracy. We need to put that back on the ballot. Do you agree with that, that we should put Prop H back on to create a billion-dollar fund, some affordable housing, some homeless housing, and some model?
I think it's a good idea, and I think that we'll need some creative minds to come up with an effective political strategy to get the two-thirds we need.
Last question is the joint at the hip that I say a lot, between planning and transportation. In the past, they didn't join at the hip. My district is a perfect example of a disaster, of lack of planning between L.A. City, City of Santa Monica, City of Culver, and the county. We're gridlocked, morning, noon, and night, north, south, east, west. What's your sense of our transportation infrastructure or lack thereof and what we need to do and tie it into planning?
Well, once again, Mr. Rosendahl, you're asking another tough question. Let me try to give you the short version of an answer, and I'd be happy to talk to you or to other council members in more detail. Los Angeles, like many other large cities, frequently runs into a problem of the left hand and the right hand not knowing what each other are doing. And specifically relating to your question, frequently, land use planning and transportation planning seem to happen in separate vacuums or the so-called bureaucratic silos. In the City Planning Commission, we have a limited ability to force the land use planning and the transportation planning ideas to start to come together. For example, as one commissioner, I've tried to take it upon myself to challenge what I consider to be the crazy off-street parking requirements in the city, which have the effect of providing a kind of indirect incentive for people to drive cars more because we require developers to spend huge amounts of money on building off-street parking, thus being a kind of a subsidy for using more cars. The planning process on the land use side has some ways of dealing with it, and I know that the general manager of L.A. DOT and Gail Goldberg are talking to each other, talking about issues like how to promote transit-oriented development. But in my opinion, there really needs to be a lot more in terms of bringing the land use planning and transportation planning together. Too often, these decisions are being made separately, and the city really suffers from that.
Thank you. And you know, we need to have a master plan, a 20-year plan of transportation infrastructure for Southern California. It's not just the cities, it's not just the county, it's the region we're in. We're all in immense gridlock. We need some real leadership from our mayor and from our governor, putting it on the wall and saying, here's what we need to do over the next 20 years, here's the funds we're going to get to do it, so that people have some hope. They have no hope right now. They're fed up and frustrated. Another subject, real quickly, is the small towns work together, their departments of this, that, and the other, and they look at their city organically. We don't as a city. It's part of this right-hand, left-hand. DWP doesn't talk to street services. You know, I have an example of one street that they were trying to pave over again with the pipe underneath. It's been there since 1925 and needed to be replaced. I intend to take my district, the 11th district, and pull all the services together in one room and talk about it like the small towns do, get everybody on the same wavelength. Does that make sense?
Yes, I think that makes a lot of sense. From our point of view, you may be aware, the City Planning Commission had its first ever joint meeting with the CRA Board, because we found that in the lack of communication between the two different departments, sometimes the planning commission was being sent projects by the redevelopment agency that we felt were not consistent with the so-called 14 principles that we enunciated recently about how to make our city more sustainable. So it'd be better if, instead of having these overt conflicts, if the departments and the commissions actually talked to each other more. So your encouragement, I think, would be very helpful.
Well, we're all blessed that you've stepped back up to the plate to being on the planning commission. You're eminently qualified, you're a great leader in this city, and thank you so much for doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We next have Mr. Zain to be followed by Ms. Grul. Mr. Zain.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
You stood down at SC.
The what? Yes, yes. Although for the UCLA people, I'm also there one quarter a year.
All right, okay.
You just got the full council vote.
Okay, good.
There you go. You mentioned housing, planning, transportation, the disconnect, and the problem that we have, at least in the Valley, is the cost of housing. Our single-family residents seem to be evaporating. It's now condos and lofts downtown at extremely, extremely high rates. The opportunity to provide that income for an individual to afford that particular residence. And I know that, I grew up in an apartment, and then my parents ultimately bought a home, live in a home now, a single family with a garage, and you can put your stuff there away, and a backyard and a dog and all that. The new trend is to get away from that, just because of the population. I know that SCAG has said 113,000 additional units here. The question is, the jobs that go along, so you'll be able to have the income to support the residents and not have multiple families living in a one- or two-bedroom apartment. How do we blend that together? And I understand your issues on transportation, which has been a major disconnect for years. How do we get those jobs established here and not moving out of this region for whatever reason? So people have the income in order to provide that residence, that new condo, that new loft, which is the trend that we're going now.
Well, Mr. Zain, you're asking a very tough question about how to combine economic development with housing, or in other words, how do we not neglect the need to create jobs in the city as well as meeting the need for housing? I think that there are some ways that the city planning process can address this, whether it's through rezoning, whether it's through offering planning incentives to property owners or business owners to get them to locate in the city. I think that may require greater flexibility than we've offered in the past. I'm also very interested, again, trying to bring different worlds together, to get business owners and property owners who are thinking about expanding their business to also think about supporting housing located close to where their businesses are located. For example, in my spare time, I'm chairman of the governing board of Hollywood Presbyterian Medical Center. As you may know, there are these parking lots and parking structures around. The new owner of the hospital came up with an idea about putting a shopping center around his hospital, thinking if people went to visit their sick aunt, they might go into the shopping center for a couple of hours. I suggested to him, maybe if you've got this land around the hospital, you should think about supporting housing, especially housing for nurses and other hospital employees. This is not a solution for everybody, and part of the dilemma of the question you're raising is the need for housing for families with children. That is, it's relatively easy for us, whether in Woodland Hills or in downtown L.A., to provide lofts or one- or two-bedroom apartments for singles or couples without children. But one of the ways in which Los Angeles is really suffering is that we're losing a lot of families with children whose adults work in the city of L.A., who are moving out to the outlying areas because it's the most affordable place to find a place that's suitable for families with kids. So I think that as we promote housing and in the planning commission, we're getting more and more of these mixed-use projects with apartments on top of retail projects. We aren't seeing a lot of what I would describe as family-oriented housing. And so I think that through the planning process, we have to find ways to stop forfeiting the family-oriented housing, housing for families with kids, from moving further away from the center of the city.
I know a few drive out to Rancho Cucamonga, which I've traveled out that area, desert land, that they're building city upon city, single-family residence, half a million dollars, but a brand-new home, the shopping centers are coming out there, and you're right, and the people clog the roads to get in to the jobs.
Exactly. So, Mr. Zain, this is exactly the problem I was trying to get at in my answer to Mr. Rosendahl, about the disconnect between land use priorities and transportation priorities by failing to provide housing for families with children and by having these families move further away while the jobs are located still in the urban core, we are worsening the transportation problem by having all these people driving unnecessary distances to get from their home way out there into the city. So again, that's another reason why the land use and the transportation need to be locked together.
And I hope that your inclusion on the commission will bring that about because it's desperately needed, and your insight, an urban planner, to try and take it up a step from where we've been, because we've really been in an environment of more and more development, no transportation enhancement. And believe me, I'm born and raised in Los Angeles. It's not like New York, it's not like the East Coast where you rely on public transit, and it's convenient, it's efficient. Our public transit system is really a shambles. When you look at the opportunity to go from the Valley to LAX, it takes an hour to get from Pasadena to downtown on the Gold Line. The commute is too long. So people say, it'll take me an hour and 15 minutes in a car, an hour in the public transit. Well, I'll go in a car. So that issue, that disconnect, people keep talking about transit, they'll put an orange line, put a red line, a blue line, whatever. It's a nice idea, they don't connect, and the distance to get from the Valley to Long Beach, for example, I've done that, about three-hour trip from the orange line to the red line to the blue line, about a three-hour trip. That's just one way, way too long. So that component, hopefully with your inclusion on the commission, will make things happen.
Well, Mr. Zain, I'll do my best. I should say, in defense of my colleague, Diego Cardoso, on the City Planning Commission who works for the MTA, for some people, the transportation system works really well. And I have found, for example, right now, I can't drive because I had an operation on my eye, and my doctor won't let me drive. So for the last two days, I've actually been taking transit around. There's a bus stop one block away from my house. I've been riding, after this, I'm going to take the Gold Line out to Pasadena and then back to the cornfield. And so for some people, it does work, but we need to do more, especially with the feeder lines that connect between where people live to where the bus or the rail lines. If we could address that through dash systems or other ways to augment the system that currently exists, I think a lot more people would ride transit.
And to get them there quicker, because we're always pressed, it's not the distance, it's how long it's going to take to get there. That's always the focus we have, really. Well, welcome aboard. Back to the city family.
Thank you.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, and I won't take too much time, because a lot of my colleagues have talked about an issue that is critically important to me as Chair of the Transportation Committee. And I know that, as we've appeared before, the planning commission and as my committee has, the biggest issue regarding various projects is traffic and what kind of traffic it will create and how we make decisions and how we look at the cumulative impact, how we look at trip credits, which we're also looking at, and how we determine and have a vision as to where density will occur and, for some people, more importantly, where it will not occur. So there is some coordination there in that location. And I know we've been working with the department and talking to the commissioners about how we educate the public, and this is something that I know, I mentioned when the commissioners here were here before, was how do we begin to engage and have a dialogue about the planning process, where we control things, where we don't control, where we can have influence. And I think I was impressed with the commission coming up with their 12, 12?
14.
14, sorry.
You're missing two.
14 points, which says, this is a philosophy which is consistent, most of it with the, 14 points, which says, this is a philosophy which is consistent, most of it with the, you know, the city, and I know, I think Plumb is going to have a presentation on that as well. But I have been very impressed with the commission, their diligence in reading all of those materials and the time that it takes, so I appreciate that. And I think that everyone should take public transportation when they can, whether it's once a month, whether it's once a week, to be able to see where the gaps are. I know, as someone who does take the subway, I see some of the problems with parking, or as you, I think someone said, the lack of a seamless system. You might be able to get from the Valley to downtown, beginning from the Valley to the West Side, or from the West Side to here, it does take much longer than any of us would like. So I just want to thank you for your commitment, willingness. You've been a great commissioner and someone who has been very thoughtful in your decision-making process.
Thank you, Ms. Grue. I will, I and my colleagues, I think, will try to do our best to support your efforts. I think that there's a new attitude, not just from our commission, but also from your committee and the council, in terms of the relationship to the automobile, and what is the right role of the automobile within the urban environment. And I think from the City Planning Commission, I for one, I think, and some of my colleagues, I think, really wanted to try to push the envelope, that is, to try harder than we ever have before, to be tough about making choices, and recognizing that you can't just add an endless number of parking spaces, you can't just widen streets, you can't just eliminate pedestrian opportunities, and ignore the impact that has on how sustainable the city is. So whether it's decisions about parking spaces, decisions about opposing recommendations for street widening, I think you can count on our commission to continue to take, and perhaps an even tougher line, about trying to point in a different direction.
Thank you, thank you very much for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Thank you. Michael Wu, good to see you. Thank you for your service to Los Angeles. Has your Planning Commission and the Transportation Commission ever had a joint meeting?
No, not yet, but I think we would welcome it, and if you could help us arrange it, I think we would be very interested.
Sure, good. And also to look at some issues here, which would be deeper, I know your longtime involvement with Los Angeles, because sometimes I feel the Transportation Department, you know, goes one direction, which is important, and then when the Planning Department goes another. And sometimes I think it would be great to put everybody in a room and say, you know what, maybe we could do a little of this better if we put this over here, put that over there. So I welcome that. Just on a land use issue, because you're big on neighborhoods, and I think of you, I want to tell you the truth, Hyperion in Scotland, because when you were a councilperson, you had the first Million Tree Initiative. And I remember you planted trees there on Hyperion that are blooming beautifully by Michael Lear's architectural office there, where the LA Weekly used to be, by the old Safeway, and then over on St. Andrews, you did some, you know, and other parts, which was good. What about this idea of one-way and our converting streets to dual-function counterflow lanes like Pico and Olympic?
Mr. Labange, thank you for asking this question. There's an interesting column in today's New York Times by Thomas Friedman about how the world has changed because so many things can be videotaped or recorded on a camera phone. If you were to turn back the clock and ask the Mike Wu of 1990 this question, I would have given you a different answer than I'll give you today. About 17 years ago, I supported a recommendation in Hollywood to convert Sunset and Santa Monica into a one-way street pair, because I was convinced at the time by engineers, there's going to be so much traffic going east-west through this part of town, got to do something about it. And I think that I accepted it in an unquestioning way. Today, with a proposal to turn, say, Olympic and Pico into a one-way street pair, I think because I'm thinking differently now, perhaps more neighborhood-oriented, also more sustainability-oriented. To me, I wouldn't completely rule out the idea of one-way street pairs, but I think the current proposal at Olympic and Pico essentially is proposing to bring a freeway without the infrastructure into the core of a city. And in a way, it goes against what I think some of our basic policies should be, which is, it makes it easier, it will make it easier for people to go between the west and the east in their cars, instead of using an incentive to get people to not get in their cars. I've said unofficially that I think I'd only support one-way street pairs on Olympic and Pico if they were set aside only for transit. In other words, why worsen the traffic by having, making it easier for cars to get there?
Or create a track beat. It is a couplet where there would be a counterflow, and there would be times that the buses would always run in each direction. But it's worth looking at, or looking at pairs of streets. I know in the Valley, and I try to champion some transit issues from time to time, but you have Victory Boulevard, Roscoe, Sherman Way, some big streets, and how you can, you know, if you come at the right speed, you can move across. But the planning issue is very important. Bump outs on intersections to make streets narrower where it makes sense, I think all that needs to be discussed, that's a public works issue, but your experience will bring a lot to it. I do believe, though, it's important that we really fight for it, I'd like to ask you to do this thing, mansionization, because nothing upsets the neighborhoods more. Last Sunday morning, we had time before the special walk that they had for Project Angel Food, when we walked from their old headquarters out on West Sunset Boulevard to their new headquarters on Vine, to go up into the Hollywood Hills prior to the walk, and the mansions are bigger than, I thought I was at a Holiday Inn, or one of those, what do they call those junior Holiday Inns? You know, whatever they are, whatever they call those junior, Orlando, thank you for that help there, whatever they are. We can't, you know, I believe in you should have a home, and it should be a right size, but the issue has to come back to us, and we should do it, whether it's in the Hollywood Hills, or in Atwater Village, or in Boyle Heights, or in Venice, or Jefferson Park, or Van Nuys, or Winnetka. Mansionization is an issue that touches everyone's concern, and I see Mr. Rosendahl perk up on that. Would you please push that?
Okay. Yes, I think it's on our agenda tomorrow, so I will do our best to, we'll do our best to come up with something and bring it to this commission.
Thank you very much, Michael, and it's good to see you walking in the neighborhood when I see you walking, and it's good that your service to the city continues, and I hope all's well with your family.
Thank you.
I know, I speak for Mr. Garcetti to the chair, we appreciate having your input in the community from your long service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Mr. Parks is next, and then Mr. Rosendahl for a second.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
I just wanted, and we've dealt with some of this before your commission, as you know, and you've worked right in the heart of South Los Angeles and fully aware of some of the issues of older communities. And one of the things that we have been trying to figure out with the narrower lots and the narrow streets and those kinds of issues of how, and we're also getting ready to go through the community plan process, how does those types of communities get an opportunity to start looking in the future for the kinds of buildings such as Coscos or Targets that are far greater than what's available in the land? Because the moment you start creeping behind the narrow commercial lots, then residential population steps up and gets very nervous about how you can redirect the community. I'm just wondering if you have any thoughts on how and what we should be looking for in trying to transition these older communities?
So you're asking what can be done in the case of a major big-box retailer like a Costco?
A Costco, but again, what are?
In terms of the connection to existing residential neighborhoods right behind those lots?
That's right.
That's a tough problem.
And also narrow streets, that, to accommodate what is the impact of traffic also.
Assuming that you don't want to rezone those residential neighborhoods to allow for multifamily housing as a buffer between the retail and the single-family homes, if you don't want to do that, then it seems that what you may need to do is to protect those neighborhoods, either through traffic diverters, speed bumps, barriers of different kinds to keep the cars out, maybe even permit parking, in some cases paid for by the developer of the big-box retailers. In other words, to try to shield the neighborhood residents from having to shoulder a lot of the expense. But some of these problems of cars wandering around looking for parking places are tough to control unless the neighborhood is willing to support some things that may be inconvenient, like putting up some diverters, no-left-turn signs, things like that. It can be dealt with, but not easily.
Yeah, but I think the larger issue we have in the sense of land assemblage, because again, unless you're going to build a long, skinny, big box, you don't have a lot of options on how to redesign with all of those tensions in the community about residential property and the shortage of it. And again, when you start looking at the narrow streets, the expectation is you're going to create another lane if you're going to do that development, and that even makes the commercial lot even more narrow. And then you're right back into the alley behind the commercial, and then you're right at the front door of the residential. And that seems to be the quandary of much of the property south of the Santa Monica Freeway, because it's the older part of the community that was built several years ago, and yet, as we go forward on the community plans, if we don't figure out some of those solutions, we're destined to just keep building what's already there, is a combination of strip malls and things that have not been successful, because we can tell their lack of success, because you get turned over every five to seven years. In fact, I tell people in the community that in South Los Angeles, they invented adaptive reuse before it became popular, because a strip mall can become a church, or a house can become a car lot, and you can go through the community and see many of these businesses are not the initial business that was put in place.
Well, Mr. Parks, you're raising a very tough challenge, because the basic challenge is, as you say, the street pattern and the relatively shallow lots. If you're not willing, if the city is not willing to change those patterns, then you are basically limited to the conventional strip mall-type development. If there are some circumstances in your district where there may be some opportunity to consolidate properties and even to change the street pattern, there may be a possibility of doing some interesting things. For example, several months ago at City Planning Commission, we had a representative of Target come in, who was talking about how his company, Target, was open to doing a different pattern of development, that is, not the conventional big box with the big box and a huge sea of parking spaces around it, but doing something which might even combine a Target store with housing on the same lot. In other words, there may be a way to do this so that you could actually preserve or even upgrade a neighborhood with something other than a scary big-box development that might intimidate the neighbors. This wouldn't be easy to do, and it potentially raises some questions about, are you willing to rethink the street pattern in some areas? But what I'm saying is, I think there may be some options about ways to address this challenge in your district.
And I think the other one that gets tossed back at us a great deal is, the minute you mention eminent domain and residential property, then there's a lot of discussions that cease almost immediately, and so you're then back to the strip mall, narrow streets, and all of these issues that, again, and figuring out how to change the pattern if you're going to bring new services to the community.
This is what my planning professors used to call a wicked problem.
We'll be in touch with you to talk more about that, but that's what our issues are, and we're looking for some guidance as we move forward on the community plans. Because if we just rewrite the community plans as they are, they will not serve us well over the next 10 years plus. But the issue is, we need to figure out how we might address those multiple issues so that we give some guidance to developers and we give some, get some input from the community, but we actually look at how we can redesign some of the community.
Happy to help you grapple with this problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Just a quick second, thank you, Mr. President. You know, when Tom Labange talked about mansionization, you know, I'm meeting with the Palisades Civic League later this week, and their big issue is a view ordinance. Now, you're going to do the mansionization one tomorrow?
I think it's on our agenda tomorrow.
And when can you start really focusing on the view ordinance?
We'll have to talk to Gail Goldberg about this, but hopefully I'll go up and see her as soon as we're done.
That'd be great, because that's what they're banging on my door about in the Palisades and up in the Brentwood Hills and in the Canyons, is to protect their views. I put in a motion on a view ordinance. It came after the mansionization one, which is also a big issue in my district and other places like Westchester and Mar Vista and Venice, where people are taking up every bit of land and building up. But it's the view ordinance in the hillsides that are most important to me. And again, thank you for stepping to the plate.
Thank you. I'll ask Gail Goldberg about this, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. And that's our last speaker in the queue. So with that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Congratulations on your reappointment. Round of applause for Mr. Wu.
Thank you.
Item number 31, if you'll read into the record before we take that vote, Madam Clerk.
The city sold the 2007 tax and revenue anticipation notes as follows. Lehman Brothers at a true cost of 3.62014% for $25 million of the principal amount of the notes. Citi at a true cost of 3.62014% for $125 million of the principal amount of the notes. JP Morgan Securities Incorporated at a true cost of 3.62928% for $100 million of the principal amount of the notes. UBS Securities LLC at a true cost of 3.62954% for $33 million of the principal amount of notes. Zion's Bank at a true cost of 3.62954% for $25 million of the principal amount of the notes. Goldman Sachs and Company at a true cost of 3.62954% for $100 million of the principal amount of the notes. Bank of America Securities at a true cost of 3.62954% for $50 million of the principal amount of the notes. Goldman Sachs and Company at a true cost, a true interest cost of 3.63016% for $100 million of the principal amount of the notes. And Merrill Lynch at a true interest cost of 3.63059% for $351,725,000 of the principal amount of the notes, for the total principal amount of $909,725,000 at a weighted average true interest cost of 3.62845%.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Anybody wishing to be heard on this item? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Yes, Mr. Labange, Mr. Parks asked for something out of order, but did you want to make an announcement or something?
Karen's Kim did a great job as a summer intern. He's already completed his project, he's going back, going to head to what college? Going to Cal Berkeley. Give him a big hand. Thank you for your service to Los Angeles.
I know Mr. Weezer will be very happy about your attendance at Berkeley, so. Mr. Parks has asked for item number 17 out of order. If there's no objection, colleagues, we will take that up next. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we have three cards from the public, if we can allow them to speak and then we'll go forward.
There's no objection to reopening the public hearing, hearing none. I'd like to first call upon Ann Duncan to come forward.
And hold my time?
Yes. And then Susan Verge will be next after that, and then Christopher Peak.
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Duncan, and I'm representing the Southern California Injury Prevention Research Center at UCLA School of Public Health. I'm also representing the Violence Prevention Coalition of Greater Los Angeles. In the latest data from the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention show that 2,827 children and teens died from firearms in the United States in 2003. That's about one child or teen every three hours. This is a public health issue, calling for prevention measures, so we are in full support of this proposed ordinance, and we ask for a vote of yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Suzanne?
My name is Suzanne Verge. I'm with the Los Angeles chapter of the Brady Campaign to Prevent Gun Violence, and I'm also representing the San Fernando Valley chapter, formerly a Million Ma March chapters. I urge you to support this ordinance. Because of my work with gun violence, I know all too well of lives cut short because of a gun in the home. My brother was murdered because there was a gun in the home. I think if there wasn't a gun in that situation, there would have been just a good fistfight. I always ask when my kids go to somebody's home if they have a gun in the house, and I'll never forget asking my neighbor if she had a gun. And she said, yeah, we bought one after the riots. I don't know why we did, we just kind of got caught up in the hysteria. But once I told her the risk of having that gun in the home with kids, she turned that gun into the police, and it was destroyed. I think it's very important when somebody's making a purchase of a lethal weapon that they understand the risk, so I urge you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christopher Peak is our next speaker. After that is Nico Milonopoulos.
Hello, my name is Christopher Peak, and I'm a student at Loyola High School. I'm here today because I know the price of gun violence. I never got to meet my uncle because he was shot and killed by a gun, by someone he knew, someone who had a gun in their home. And before I begin, I just want to read you one quick stat from the Journal of Trauma. For every time a gun is used in a home, an illegally justifiable shooting, so that's one shooting in which they defend themselves from a criminal, there are 22, 22 criminal, unintentional, or suicide-related shootings. That's 1 in 22 chance, that's about 95, 96% chance that that gun's going to be used against the owner or against someone that they know. Organizations like the NRA- Organizations like the NRA, they try to proclaim that one shooting in which they defend themselves as being that great thing. They say that the gun's going to keep you safe. The gun industry prays on that fear, on that anxiety, that criminals are going to break into your home. And they say, "This gun, if you buy it, they make this promise that it will keep you safe." But, and really, the major criminals are the ones that are in the gun industry for selling this product with a 95% chance that's going to be used against you or used against your family members. They're the criminals for using this product that increases the risk of suicide five times over. They're the criminals for selling this product that increases the risk of homicide three times over. It's your opportunity now, council members, to have this chance to reverse this promise, to make sure that people know the real truth about guns, about the impact that they can have. That it's your opportunity now to make sure that you can reverse the impact of suicide, reverse the impact of domestic violence involving a gun, reverse the impact of homicide, reverse the impact of accidental shootings. It's your opportunity now, so I urge you to vote in favor of this ordinance for the sake of protecting the lives of the people of the city we call home, Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nico Milonopoulos? Good morning. Nice to see you.
I'm Nico Milonopoulos, 20-year-old gun control activist and co-founder of Kids Voice L.A. and Box Populay. Just two months ago, two months and 11 days ago, our country experienced its deadliest school shooting massacre when a mentally disturbed 21-year-old, 23-year-old student gunned down 32 of his peers and killed himself on the campus of Virginia Tech. In response, our federal government remained silent, proposing no effective measure to curb the shootings that plagues our cities, states, and nation. In Los Angeles this month, 17-year-old Ruben Garcia Castillo was gunned down while buying groceries. A 15-year-old, and 15-year-old Devon Harris was killed while walking down the streets of the South L.A. neighborhood. These senseless shootings that cut the lives of our city's future short are unacceptable. This proposed legislation before you today is a step in the right direction. By requiring firearm dealers to post warnings of the dangers associated with keeping a firearm in the home, this motion addresses an issue that is more than a gun safety issue. It's a consumer protection issue. Just as blow dryers have tags warning of the risk of electric shock, cigarette packs have warnings of the risk of cancer from tobacco, and fireworks have warnings of their explosive natures, consumers have the right to know the truth about the hazards of keeping firearms in the home. In just a few minutes, this council will face a decision. Will you follow the lead of the federal and state government by ignoring this issue for political purposes? Or will you stand and lead the charge to create a network of cities in the state and country to end the senseless gun violence? I urge this council to stand and to lead. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one final speaker in Van Nuys. If we can go out to Van Nuys, Miriam Fogler is our speaker in Van Nuys.
I sympathize for the people who have been hurt, but it's not the gun is the problem. It's the person or people, okay? And you can't just say, put warnings on everything because you're opening up for big lawsuits. This is in violation of people's rights to have a knife to protect themselves, a gun to protect themselves, a car. You're telling everybody, whatever you have, any inanimate object, you've got to have a warning. It's endangering your life, and that means you have no right to protect yourself from the monsters that we have to face today. It's okay just to drop everything you have, just be open pawns, open season to be slaughtered. That's what you're saying, you people who are anti-gun, gun control advocates. You just want us to be victims of these mass murderers who want to murder people by putting on bombs, tying on bombs, going out and shooting people, and you just want to continue to allow people to be slaughtered, like the Holocaust. They rounded up all the people because they gave all their guns away. They turned in their guns. If they turned in all their guns, we wouldn't have to be putting warnings on, oh, guns are hazardous, you know? It's hazardous, you have to be breathing the bad air today, folks. Come on now. So we need to have self-protection, morality. It calls for us to write to defend yourself. You have a right to protect your country. You have a right to protect what's right and protect God's laws, that God has given us this right here. And if you don't know how to handle a weapon, or know how to drive a car, or know what a cigarette does, don't handle it. Now, it's just common sense. You don't need to pass an ordinance like this, but of course, I know you're going to do it. It's a rubber stamp deal. And of course, you don't want to think that the people are going to stand by and allow them to be disarmed in this country like Nazi Germany, like Hitler did, remember the Holocaust yesterday?
Thank you, Ms. Fogler.
Never again.
Thank you very much. That closes our public comment, and I'll return to Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to say, first of all, thank you all for coming down and making your comments. And Nico, probably the longest-tenured anti-gun person in the city. I met him when he was like this.
Youngest and longest tenured, huh?
But he, we were walking together on Wilshire Boulevard, and he was barely, I guess, in grade school, leading the charge about gun issues. And so we're just pleased. Now he's in college, and he's continuing. And I want to thank Loyola University, Loyola High School, the Million Moms March, and the Brady Foundation and all that have been here today. Colleagues, what we're attempting to do today is continue the city's effort over a period of time of impacting gun violence. Just to give you kind of a historical perspective, in 1998, this city took on creating a requirement for records on ammunition sales. In 2006, it became an ordinance, a duty to report a theft of a lost firearm. In 1998, the sale of ammunition clips and similar devices became an ordinance. In 1999, the sale and purchase of more than one handgun within 30 days period was prohibited. In 2001, fingerprinting of firearm purchasers. In 2001, sale of ultra-compac firearms were prohibited. In 2002, ordinance dealing with possession of guns in the airport. 2005, the sale of large-caliber firearms were prohibited. 1997, sellers of firearms prohibited the transfer of Saturday night specials. This ordinance would go in that long list of firearm safety, and that we are putting forth a wording, so that it's for warns individuals about the dangers of firearms. If we go back in our research, we find that most people, as one of the speakers said, they buy guns believing that it's, quote, "for their protection." But most of the data reflects that homes are more likely to use a weapon or have an accidental killing in that home if there is a gun, far more than protecting against an attacker or an intruder. The presence of a gun in a home can turn otherwise harmless moment of frustration into a deadly tragedy. It is clearly an incorrect myth that gun ownership increases safety and the safety of the family. The wording here, again, is something that sends a clear message that in the city of Los Angeles, that guns in the home are much more likely to be used to kill a household member than to protect against an intruder. It is safe, safe as not to keep a gun in the home. However, if a gun is kept in the home, it should be kept unloaded and securely locked with ammunition locked up separately. This is something we think just adds to the five-to-seven-year history of this city to continue moving forward on safety in dealing with guns. Even though we are preempted in many instances to deal with gun issues by state law, we have found through a great deal of innovation in legislation to continue to address this issue. And I'd ask that we have an aye vote to add one more step in gun safety and safety of our community by putting this warning in any store that sells a weapon or also on any bill of sale for an individual that buys a weapon. So that's for an aye vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
With 11 ayes, that will go to a second reading next week, since we have fewer than 12 members, but receives a positive vote for today. So thank you very much. If we can go to the next item, please.
Next item is item number one, and that was called special by cars from the public.
Okay. We have one card on item number one. Michael Hunt. Is Mr. Hunt here? Do not see him, so we'll close the public hearing. Please open the roll on number one, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That will go to a second reading next week due to 11 members. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 11, and that's a public convenience and necessity finding.
Okay. We have Matt Dowd and Michael Hunt, Mr. Hunt or Mr. Dowd here. Seeing either of those, I will move that. And Ms. Gruel, seconds. With that, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 19, and that was called special by Councilmember Labonge.
Okay. Mr. Labonge, item number 19 from Mr. Reyes's seat.
Staff from the department, come forward. On May 8th and 9th, there was a horrific fire that destroyed over 25% of Griffith Park, as you all remembered. I thank you for your support in that time. With us this morning, Michael Schull, who is the Director of Planning for the Department of Recreation and Parks, Marilyn White, who's the superintendent of Griffith Park, and Tom McCall, who is the park maintenance supervisor. Is that correct title, Tom? Principal groundskeeper, I apologize there. Would you give the council an update on our efforts there? And you could speak to the chair, because I'm going to go back to my chair.
I attended the Griffith Park Resource Board meeting and Community Congress meeting. The department is aware of the community's desire to get back to normal and resume recreational activities in Griffith Park, especially now that summer is here. Many of the same community members want to be a part of the efforts to restore trails and recreation areas and are anxiously awaiting the completion of the Griffith Park Fire Recovery Plan to be unveiled. This plan will help clarify volunteer efforts within the newly-formed Griffith Park Conservation Corps and especially implement a plan to coordinate volunteer efforts for the restoration of Griffith Park, including but not limited to the rebuilding of trails, gardens, and vistas. Safety is our number-one concern for volunteers and staff in completing and implementing the plan. Once the preliminary phase of the recovery, fire recovery project, the evaluation and stabilization has been complete, and debris and hazardous conditions have been mitigated, we will be able to organize and initiate volunteer efforts. In the interim of receiving the go-ahead to initiate a coordinated volunteer effort within the burn areas, we have identified several opportunities for future volunteer participation. Assistance with tree planting, vegetation monitoring, invasive weed removal, minor trail repairs, reestablishing gardens and vistas. The Department Planning Division is preparing preliminary designs to restore landmark sites such as Dante's View, Captain's Roost, and Fern Canyon Nature Trail for review and input from the Neighborhood Council and other community groups. We are currently creating a database of individual volunteers and nonprofit groups interested in volunteer efforts, including what their interests are, special skills, availability, and contact information. We would also like to consult with other agencies and other departments who have experienced disasters and an outpouring of offers for help from volunteers to identify best practices for coordinating their efforts, maintaining their interest and enthusiasm in the months following the fire until we're ready able to call upon them in an organized and meaningful fashion. Our goal is to plan monthly volunteer efforts that target specific recovery tasks and outcomes, providing the necessary tools, staff, trained team leaders, resources, and logistics in place beforehand to ensure safety and spirit of goodwill throughout the day. We also want to accomplish these events to have an element of fun and accomplishment.
What is the, Ms. White, what is the date you're looking to that?
We would like to start monthly mid-July, beginning of August.
Thank you. Michael, could you give a report?
Well, with what Marilyn is saying in regards to volunteer efforts, I think our best initial opportunities are probably at Dante's View and Captain's Roost. And you and I have had conversations. We are developing some preliminary drawings to restore them, and I think, once working through your office and the community, we can, you know, get some concerted efforts, particularly for those, and probably, you know, in early fall.
What do you, early fall? When do you think the four beams of that bridge are going to be repaired?
I don't have a date for you right now. I don't believe it should take too long, but it's because it's just the slats, actually, as far as we know. But I've actually not received a detailed assessment yet of that. I'll have to follow up on that.
If you could, because I think what happens is, all of a sudden, a slat that is slightly damaged becomes more damaged, and you have a higher cost on it to do that there. And the ongoing dialogue with your working group, if I could call it that, is on a Wednesday working group, where professionals, not just City of Los Angeles officials, but from state, county, and outside agencies, they have been reviewing this.
Yeah, we're actually meeting this afternoon. We've been meeting on a weekly basis pretty consistently since the fire. And as you mentioned, there are many agencies from state, local, and federal levels, like U.S. Forestry and Department of Agriculture and others, are basically, you know, working with us to make sure, with their experience that they've had in the wildfires that they deal with on a regular basis, that whatever we do has, you know, proven best management practices. And so far, you know, it's been, they've been extremely helpful. And today will be the first meeting we've actually had where we're actually talking about, you know, measures or treatments to be taken in the park.
Right, in that area. Mr. McCall, you have anything you would like to add?
No, we're certainly looking forward to having volunteers assisting my staff in the cleanup effort and the restoration at these landmark sites.
We had over 200 volunteers on Saturday, and your Javier, I believe, was...
Javier, correct.
What's his last name, forgive me?
Solis.
Javier Solis was a great leader there, along with Mr. Gohaba, Mr. Rivera, and many of the others in that area. Marshall and some of those top people you have, the few people that you have doing a good job in that Ferndale, and they had over 50 bags of debris that they were able to pull out in bottles on this. So we're looking for a push. How many people have signed up to be volunteers at this time?
We have about 25 so far.
Yeah, I think, I think you should check, because there's been community meetings where hundreds have signed up.
Okay.
And the thing I want, members, that I don't want is, no one is, Mr. Garcetti, remember the fire at the Central Library? There was great public passion that was expressed at that time. And for the building, there was a great movement after that. There's great public passion has been expressed. We want to make sure there's an outreach to get groups involved. I know I've talked to other council members, have organizations from their community to be able to come. I worked with Senator Mark Ridley Thomas, who represents Griffith Park. His empowerment, Congress wants to come and help. We must get that connection so that people see it. And do you have any timeline on projecting areas that are now fenced off, when they would be unfenced?
We do not. The, I think what we're waiting on is, and I think we'll have that in probably the next three or four weeks, is, but what treatments that, you know, for erosion control that are going to be implemented. And once we know that, I think that item can be readdressed and reevaluated. But it's unfortunate that the amount of analysis that has to take place from the geotechnical end on the sediment, what we call the sediment loading, or the volume of soil that could erode, is not completed yet. We have preliminary data, but we're not, we haven't come up with the necessary treatments, but we have to come up with those treatments within the next three to four weeks if we're going to have time to implement them prior to the rainy season.
And do you know if your department has received any complaints from people about access to the park?
We have, mainly at, you know, the different community meetings we've had, and it's been, I would say it's been isolated to sometimes the same people, but it's, I mean, we have received complaints. But we've also received support for what we're doing as well. But in general, the, I would believe that the, we've gotten great feedback from the community at large of how we've addressed, you know, the fire recovery as a general plan. I think everybody's extremely happy with how it's proceeding.
But summer's right upon us, and so people will be going back to their old summer spots, and they won't be allowed to get there. What about the issue of, just to know, because you're the Director of Planning, there are barbecues in the park now? barbecues in the park now, and some of them are exposed, there are no tape on them, there's no covers, there's no, but they're against the rules to barbecue, or the, do you know about that at all?
I believe their region is, would be the best to...
Mr. McCall.
As a continuation of...
The other day, when we were cleaning up Ferndale, there was a very, very nice family, and they were in Ferndale, and they were barbecuing ribs. And I said to them, you know, you're not supposed to be barbecuing. But I didn't have the heart to take out, you know, their effort there. And it wasn't at a high hazard moment, you know, it was a frosty, kind of foggy morning. But we still have these, it's like having a parking meter, but then it says you can't park there. You have a barbecue, but you're not allowed to. Are we going to do anything to resolve that?
I think this is a continuation of the conversation you and I had while walking through Ferndale last Wednesday. And we both saw that everyone's wrapping the caution tape around there in anticipation of the ordinance and then the special areas where we will be allowing barbecue and barbecuing, and then those where we will be removing the barbecues.
Right. Because at a public meeting the other day, I asked that we should take it to people who are not as fortunate as those who, you know, they go to the park, they want a barbecue, they may live in a very dense populated area. And some of the people expressed no, no support for that, you know, a total ban. So please look at that. Don't invite people to barbecue, you know, get a sign up there, temporarily closed, or whatever. Barbecue before you come to the park. And wrap it in foil, Reynolds Wrap. Mr. President, I think I have any, any other questions? Members, also, I think this is a case in point, if there's a situation in your district of such a disaster that affected the, what I think is 1,400 acres, have you got a better count on that yet?
It's close to 1,400 acres.
It's close to 1,400 acres. What the procedures are, the department is being extremely cautious, which I appreciate. But also, I see a lot of people who are very anxious to get in and help, that can't help yet. And I'll see a lot of people want to get back, not just for their exercise, but to see their camaraderie from their friends. I did have the opportunity to hike with Michael Schul one morning and John Muckrey, the General Manager of the park, which is good to see it firsthand. And we did have a hike for our Conseco and Sister Cities, which had about 300 plus of Sierra Club up there on a special permit with Albert Torres. Thank you, all of you from the Parks Department. And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge. And with that, if we can open the roll on this item? Just close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is item 20, and that was called special by Councilmember Garcetti for Councilmember Gruel.
Okay. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. And I want to thank my colleagues from the San Fernando Valley, Zine, Cardenas, Alakonan Smith, that had their whole district in the valley. But I know Mr. Weiss and Mr. Labonge support this as well. As many of you know, on February 6, 2007, the Federal Register published a notice by the Department of Commerce Bureau of Census that recommends the elimination of the Census County Division. In that notice, the Bureau indicates that the Census County Division has dropped nationally and that reporting by Census Division could be viewed as creating unnecessary complexity in geographic hierarchy. For me, it's more than geographic hierarchy. We really can't let this happen. Headline news was made when the Bureau first released its report containing the data from the San Fernando Valley bureaus. Mr. Smith remembers, we fought very hard in the valley to ensure that we could be a specific statistical area. Both of the major papers in Los Angeles use the information that was collected extensively when it became available. And this Census County Division was created to provide a broad definition of the valley as a geographical entity on its own. And it's been particularly helpful for scholars who are trying to understand the social and economic conditions of the region, for economic development and housing organizations seeking federal and state resources for the region, and for governmental entities who are trying to provide resources and services to this region. My office and others has contacted, has been contacted by legislators and working with the federal and state legislators, expressing their interest and supporting our efforts on behalf of keeping this Census County Division. And so it's important today that as we pass this, hopefully, that we will get the mayor to sign, and we will send it expeditiously for the Federal Register, because it must be received by the U.S. Census Bureau by July 5, 2007. I think public policy by the Census Bureau should not be allowed for them to determine whether enough people have asked for that information, particularly when it is new information available to our region to help us provide services to our residents, to help provide the kind of information that is necessary for the San Fernando Valley. So I ask for an I-vote today, and I'm hopeful that will pass unanimously and that then we can ask for it to go forthwith, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. And with that, let's go ahead and open the roll on item 20. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 25, and that was called special by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith, item 25.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just asked if staff would come forward. I have just a couple of quick questions as it relates to the program. To me, it's a wonderful program, but I know we also have an ambassador program now at LAX. And it seems to me that there's some overlap or unclear definition of who's doing what. So if you could just explain to me what the difference of the programs are, how they overlap, or if they don't overlap, how they merge together to provide services to traveling public in LA?
Good morning. Scott Reed, LAX Community Relations. There is some overlap there. They are both geared towards our Passenger Services Program. Excuse me. The LAX Ambassador Program consists of paid LAWA staff, and they are in charge primarily of information services. That is, they roam throughout the terminals and direct passengers to terminals, shuttle stops. They are on the lookout for confused passengers. Travelers' aid, on the other hand, while very well-versed in airport functions and operations, the main significance there is due to their social services aspect. They have caseworkers, they are involved in crisis intervention, excuse me. They are able to help, for example, distressed travelers, victims of abuse, runaways, that sort of thing. So there is some overlap there as far as information services, but there is a wide distinction there when it comes to the social services.
So there is, the overlap in really is just in that traveler assistance, basics things. And the difference is, you've got one roving group and one fixed-post group, and then on the other side, the, one group handles all the other stuff, the social program.
Correct. Thank you. LAX ambassadors are roving throughout all nine terminals. Travelers' aid, on the other hand, are stationed in booths.
Thank you very much. It was just unclear to me, I didn't know the difference, and I appreciate that, and for the listening public to know, too, that we do provide these services to the people that are traveling through LAX. So, thank you very much. I didn't want to delay the program, I just wasn't clear in my mind how they work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, let's go ahead, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 26, and that was called special by Councilmember Labonge.
Councilmember Labonge, we have item 26. And following item 26, we'll take up item 30, which Mr. Zine called special, so that'll be on deck. But meantime, I'd like to recognize Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here from the departments to report on this? This is an important aspect to help travelers' aides. And it's very simple, straight up, straightforward. I just called for an I-vote. I wanted to bring the attention often that people have emergencies when they travel through Los Angeles, and this is an issue that would help in that regard.
This one, Mr. Labonge, is the construction dumpsters on the hillside streets?
This is, Ms., I apologize. I was reading number 25 off the board behind you.
My apologies. I think we put the wrong one up. The system is a little slow right now, my apologies. The other one is important as well, but would you like to speak on 26?
Yeah. Thank you very much. I was reading without my notes. I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Hi, Representative from Public Works is right here, real quick. I know Mr. Weiss was very helpful in trying to deal with this issue, with this problem as well. We go forward with Mr. Rosendahl's support from his Committee of Public Works on the issues of dumpsters, substandard streets, and hillside areas. I know Ms. Gruel is very interested as well. Brief report for the department.
Good morning. Tom Caraballo, Bureau of Street Services. We were requested to come up with recommendations regarding 62.45 of the LAMC and the placement of bins on the public right-of-way. What we are recommending at this time is that the Bureau, I'm sorry, the Bureau recommends that the ordinance allows police officers, traffic officers, inspectors, and investigators to impound trash bins that are without permit within a 72-hour timeframe. Currently, our division prohibits the placement of the bins on streets that are less than 12 feet wide, and this would definitely help us in removing some of these bins.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. Mr. Smith, you've been a champion this as well on the former tenure of Public Works. Ask for an I-vote forthwith on this matter as well. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I have a question regarding the permits. Who do they contact to determine if there's a permit issued? Because there's no permit on the dumpster.
That would be the Bureau of Street Services.
So an individual who has a permit from the residence, if an officer sees their DOT, they call the Street Services, and they'll be able to determine by that address that there's a permit, so it's issued to a specific address?
Absolutely. The bin should only be placed in front of the property owner's address. In addition to the permit, we'll also be issuing a tag that they'll be required to put on the bin, which an officer will be able to identify that it is a permitted bin.
Okay. When does that take an effect, the tag on the bin?
Once we issue the permit.
They already, they already do that? Because I see bins all over, I don't see any tags on them.
Well, actually, we are not issuing the tags as of this moment. We still have to get together with CLA, C.A., City Attorney's Office, to square some of that away, and also to get a company, almost like OPG, which police uses for impound, to assist with the impound of the, of the bin.
So if it doesn't have a permit, they can still remain there for 72 hours before it's impounded? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
So it'd be impounded the same as a vehicle for three days?
Correct.
Okay. The other question I had is, a while back, we introduced a motion regarding reflectors on those bins. Many of those bins are on streets, and the street lighting is not, it's not a well-lit area. Who does the enforcement of the reflectors that were required to be on bins, especially in residential areas where there's large bins and they're extending past the parking lane, with no lighting, there's no reflectors, no blinking lights, nothing?
Well, currently, that is the condition of the permit. Due to staffing, though, we're responding to these complaints on call bases. But it is a responsibility of the Bureau of Street Services to make sure that the permitting is following the conditions of the permit.
So the reflector is currently required on the bins?
Yes.
And if there's a complaint on that, you folks do the enforcement on that? Do you cite the resident or the business or the company that deposits the bin?
Well, initially, we'll go to the residents, because they're the ones that actually pulled the permit, and make sure that they are following the conditions. If they fail to do that, and we cannot get them to comply, at that point, we'll contact the company and ask them to remove, and we'll revoke the permit.
Okay. Why don't we go after the company, since the resident who's doing a remodel on their home has the bin delivered, which they're paying for? The company that delivers the bin should be responsible, not the homeowner or the business that hires them to use that to collect the refuse. So I think we have it backwards, where we're going to go after the homeowner of the business. It should be the company that operates that bin that's held responsible. And we should go after those folks.
Well, that's something that we'll have to go back and look at, make sure that we either make sure we include it in the condition, or we will have to change the ordinance somehow.
Well, the ordinance currently says that the homeowner or the business is responsible to make sure there's a reflector on the bin?
The person that pulls the permit, yes, sir.
Okay, then why don't we require the company that has the bin to pull the permit? Since I'm going to do my reconstruction, I call Company A, I need a bin, they deliver the bin, why don't we require them to pull the permit instead of the homeowner or the business? To put the onus on the business instead of the individual resident or the individual establishment that's going to use that to receive the trash, which will be picked up in a few days? Why aren't we going after the companies, which we know they're obviously legitimate companies that are licensed in the city to operate?
They should be, but we do have a lot of companies that are unpermitted also, that are just dropping bins on a street. In fact, a lot of the companies that are, that are not permitted are actually using the public right-of-way to store the bins, and that's one of the problems we have right now.
And how many folks do you have doing the enforcement on this?
We have a staff of about 60 right now.
60?
60, not just dealing with this, but as part of our responsibilities.
Okay. Well, it seems that this problem, which is going to draw more attention, will get more complaints. And if you've got 60, hopefully, they can do some coordination of efforts. Street Services, I know Building Safety doesn't really deal with that, but there's an overlap many times, where Building Safety is there inspecting the facility, and they don't check the bin, that's under another section of Public Works. Maybe there'd be a little cooperation between the two, because every building is going to go through some kind of renovation, has a building inspector assigned. Maybe there should be some cross-training between you folks and Building Safety.
Absolutely. And in fact, in this recommendation, we are requesting that Contract Administration, several other departments that are dealing with construction-related duties also enforces ordinance.
And they can do that under the current ordinance that we have?
Not under the current, under this revised that we're proposing.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Back to you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Indeed, Mr. Labonge provided real leadership historically with this, and so did Mr. Smith, and we approved this in Public Works, as Chair of Public Works the other day. I'm looking at the italics here, the proposed ordinance, and some of the questions that Mr. Zine just asked are relevant. When we pass this, how are we going to publish it? How are we going to let everybody know this exists? For instance, it says, "Any building material of any kind left on the public right-of-way for 72 hours without a permit is subject to impound." Then it goes on and on about the different fees in different situations. Obviously, I want to see neighborhood councils, homeowners' associations, I want to see absolutely everybody understand this before anybody gets penalized on it. What procedures are you thinking of in publishing this and getting the word out?
Well, definitely, we'll set up some meetings with various council offices and give them the information. In addition, when people are applying for the permits, they'll also be notified. We have a website that will also provide this type of information, and obviously, if they call our office, we'll provide that also.
So once we pass this, and then it gets locked into law as an ordinance, then we will publish this to absolutely everybody we can conceivably think of, we'll meet with each council office, because I don't want a constituent calling me and saying, "I didn't realize that, da-da-da-da, and that I was violating the law." We have a lot of construction going on in our great city, and some of these streets are very narrow and are hazardous, frankly, and these issues need to be dealt. I get people calling me every day about some of these dumpsters out there. So again, how are we going to get the word out?
Well, again, you know, this will be a combined effort. We'll be working with other departments and bureaus, so we'll make sure that they also are aware of the changes in the ordinance and also pass that information on to permittees.
Would you give us a quick thumbnail as to how this will operate and when?
Well, again, you know, we're still trying to put it together with the CLA and City Attorney.
Right.
But basically, permitting can go online, submit for, and apply for a permit, or they can walk into the office. We will give them the information. We will also give them the tag that they need to place on the bin. We'll have officers out in the field that will be looking for these violators, they will tag them, and follow through with the impound procedure.
Great. Well, thank you so much for coming to hear us. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
One more question. We hired a bunch of people to do newspaper rack enforcement. Whatever happened to those individuals? Because I don't see the news racks getting in compliance.
Oh, we are, our division is still, we are currently enforcing and reseating the city as far as the news racks go. We're currently out in the South Valley area. We just finished Ventura Boulevard. We've done Roscoe. We're just about finished there. We're moving over to West LA right now. We've done some enforcement out in the Westwood Village.
Excuse me, this really isn't related to the agenda item description.
Wait a second. How can we stretch it to make it part of that?
How about, how about if we don't?
How about a news rack that's a dumpster?
Excuse me?
Thank you. It's, I got off track, but I...
We are out there, though, currently enforcing that.
All right. Thank you for keeping us on track.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll. Please close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved.
Public Works, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is item 30, and that was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine. Mr. Zine, item number 30, and the City Attorney will be watching you very carefully.
I'm ready.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have someone here from Emergency Preparedness? If we don't even hear from an Emergency Preparedness, I can't get my answers. Are you here from Emergency Preparedness? Thank you very much. This came to a couple committees, including my Personnel Committee. One of the issues regarding $848,000 for this project is a request back regarding the education outreach training activities to be performed. Has anyone come up with anything in that arena that we've asked before we move forward and hire these people to do a job and try and figure out what they're going to be doing?
Sir, you're asked, I'm sorry, my name is Myra Kutaske, I'm with Emergency Preparedness Department. So, you're asking specifically what the AmeriCorps volunteers will be doing in their outreach efforts?
Yes. And who, because it talks about training, it talks about, are we going to train the trainers to train other people? Is it going to be a citywide program? Some of the issues on the expenditures, the training is at $26,000. Is that to train the people who are going to be training, or is that cost for the training programs? Exactly what are they going to do?
Okay.
Because the question is, we want to prepare people. We got the CERT program with the Fire Department, Police Department has programs, this is a new program coming out, hiring additional people, and the question is, what are they actually going to do? What information are they going to have that doesn't duplicate what we already give from the Police Department and from the Fire Department? What new programs, what new training are we going to give to the people of Los Angeles?
My name is Jean Chan, I'm with the Mayor's Office. We have a detailed curriculum for the members. Once they come through, they'll go through an intensive one-week retreat training to, so that they'll be briefed on the city processes. They'll be learning from, there'll be speakers that will be invited from LAPD, from Fire Department, Emergency Preparedness Department, and they'll have a coordinated training plan, and we could provide that to you in terms of hours and, you know, leadership skills, speaking skills, things, the community that they're going to be going out to, they're going to be doing, they're going to be provided more in specific instruction and working with the community, and also some of the geographics of the community itself.
And we know we have diverse communities. We have non-speaking communities, not non-speaking, non-English-speaking communities. What type of outreach are we going to do for the non-English-speaking communities throughout the city of Los Angeles?
I think it was brought up in Personnel Committee, what the requirements for the members would be, and I just wanted to clarify. The requirements from the AmeriCorps provisions state that they have to be 17 years of age and a U.S. citizen, so that's the basic requirements from AmeriCorps. For our program itself, we've developed a little more stringent regulations of what we're looking for in terms of member recruitment. We want to make sure that they have a knowledge of the L.A. city and specific areas that the communities that they're working with. Also, we want to make sure that the representation of special needs populations will also be included, including seniors, physically challenged individuals, people with different language-speaking abilities.
So, we'll have individuals who are fluent in the other languages other than Spanish, the other languages that we have, and maybe they have to be coordinated with churches or schools or something, because that population is spread throughout the city. But when it comes to Emergency Preparedness, we want to make sure everyone's prepared, and I know that Hal Berenson was always a strong advocate because of earthquake, earthquake, earthquake. Well, we finally had the big earthquake, and I'm sure many people weren't prepared. And what we're trying to do is make sure everyone in Los Angeles is prepared, and that language barrier oftentimes creates a problem. So, I wanted to make sure that the folks we're bringing on board, if they're English-speaking, that's great, but that doesn't help address the other language that we have in the city of Los Angeles. So, that's going to be a part of the criteria.
Yes, that's included as part of our performance measures. We've included our outreach to the special population groups in the city.
And that would come under special population with disabled and seniors, et cetera?
Right.
Okay. And when is the program supposed to kick off?
It would start July 1st, July 2nd.
Okay. And are we giving preference to L.A. city residents?
Yes. We, I mean, that's one of the criterias we're looking at, also their knowledge of the community, so that's what we're looking at.
Well, knowledge is different than living in the city. For example, if they live in Long Beach, or they live in Pasadena, or they live in Glendale, shouldn't we try to employ people within city boundaries? In other words, live in the city of Los Angeles, wherever in the city of Los Angeles, to try and give them, people who are looking for a job at that age category?
Yes, you're correct. We're probably going to look at the entire recruitment pool and give preference to those individuals living in the city, because they'll have more of that knowledge.
Right.
Yes.
So, this will be city-wide?
Yes.
Program through all parts, all districts of the city of Los Angeles? And the training program is going to be conducted where?
Different areas. Once the project coordinator is on board, they're going to coordinate with different community agencies to coordinate trainings with other AmeriCorps programs. They'll, they can hold off-site trainings to focus on area-specific community needs. It's really going to be up to that project coordinator to determine all the logistics and figure those out.
Okay. And if we can get the information, we'll disseminate to residents within our respective communities, the council offices, if we can get that information also, when those programs are available, to let our populations know. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. No other members wishing to be heard, let's go ahead then and open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you very much. That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 41 was called special by a card from the public.
Okay. Item 41, we'll go out to Van Ays. Miriam Fogler will be first, and then Sharon Brewer.
Alan Cheesin left, but she told me the total's around $700,000 now, counting, and this is just to show you that where we need the funds badly, for like you're just, what you just voted for, you know, training people to, you know, for jobs here in L.A., you know, we're having all the shortfall, and your people are approving this stuff and having the events first. You don't even check it out. And then she showed me about the L.A. Film Festival, charging $70,000, $75,000, just to have a program. Every single year, this has been going on. So, I hope you hear me, Sharon, but, you know, I wish you were here. So, unfortunately, you know, this is what's been going on, it's another rubber stamping going on, as usual, and this is the reason why they keep wanting to keep adding ordinances, folks. This is about making money. That's why they want to pass laws against us, because this is, after all, they got to raise money for the special events, passing taxes and more fees, and we need to oppose these people. And, you know, I'm not for you or against you, but, you know, I'm trying to be neutral, but I don't like the way you people are just rubber stamping everything here and allowing these special events just go through without even just, you know, giving us a fair chance here. You just go ahead and have the events first. You don't even stop and tell them, "Hey, look, you got to have the insurance, you got to pay for the costs of closing up the streets," everything. So, I don't know why we're doing all this and doing the farmer's market things. I think these people are getting money from their customers. Why can't you get some revenue from the people who rent those booths? I mean, this has got to be a fair deal between us. So, the city's getting ripped off on these special events. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes our public comment on item 41. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 41, and that was called-
Sorry, that was 41, I believe.
Oh, sorry. Is item 45, and that was called special by cards from the public.
Okay. Miriam Fogler, again, on item 45, and we have one minute left.
One minute left? What is this?
So, the City Attorney just informed me.
No, I don't think this is correct. That's against my freedom of speech here. But remember how Watts used to come down here opposing the CRA, and that's the very thing. That's why you're limiting me to one minute, because you don't want the taxpayer here. This is taking taxing money away from the police, fire, all essential services. That's why you people are trying to find a way about some, put more money, like bins, and also, you know, everything you can think of, trash collection that's coming up, you want to try and oppose that, that's our Illinois Power Bill. You just want to keep tagging on, on and on and on, to pay for this agency, and all you want to do is stop people from mansionizing, and here, you're allowing the agency to keep building real tall buildings, bigger than block buildings. You're talking about mansionization, talk about the CRA, what they're doing. Look at what they're going to do with the Grand Avenue Project. They're going to take down a lot of parking, and the county and the federal buildings will have to probably let, move out, because they don't have any place to park there. Nobody will be able to get in there. It's going to be all snow, because who's going to ride public transit when, you know, you can't get there? It's very poor transit, it's like New York. New York, they can't even get anywhere.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments on this, and we appreciate your understanding, too, on the council policy. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved as well. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 48, and that was called special by cards from the public.
We had a hearing on this yesterday. Does this require a second hearing? Okay, so this would, this is a continuation, colleagues, we do have cards, Mr. LeBond, just so you know. It's a continuation of the land use matter we had before us, the fair use, land use matter. So, it will stay with us unless there is an eight, at least a majority vote, one direction or another, or a majority vote to receive and file. So, with that, I'd like to recognize Mr. LeBond.
Just for the record, would you just name the people who fill out cards, real quick, and that's all?
Be happy to. Maria Mejia, Melora Hart, Steve Kramer, Alexandra Soluk, John Soluk, Rob Glishon, and Marie Campbell.
All right, for the record, members, this was up yesterday. This is the issue where I disagree with what the recommendation as a committee, I disagree with what the City Attorney, the City Attorney rules and an opinion one way, I disagree with it. I would love to see some access for the wildlife in the area. There was some movement to try to make an agreement, that failed. So, with that in mind, members, I would like to see a full EIR, which is against the advice of what the City Attorney's Office or the Planning Officer, who is right here. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Planning Officer? Forgive me for not calling you by your full name, if you could. Just repeat it for council's benefit.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Dan O'Donnell with the Valley Office of City Planning. The issue you raised about wildlife corridor has already been addressed through the granting of a wildlife conservation easement. Over 50% of this property, that is an in-perpetuity easement that has been granted by this applicant on this piece of property. This is a piece of private property, and it's for the construction of a single-family home. We did a two-inch-thick mitigated negative declaration addressing the issues of biology and water on this piece of property. We do not think that requiring a full EIR for a single-family home in the hills is going to disclose any additional impacts, nor is it going to propose any additional mitigations that are not already in this MND.
Right. With that in mind, members, you have the facts before you from the report. The Planning Department feels differently than I do, the City Attorney certainly recommends differently than I do. I would like to be able to say to the people who live there, "I could try to solve this problem." I don't think I can, but I'm not going to vote for it. I'm going to ask that if you looked at this issue, based on the empiric evidence that was given by the community, that there should be some additional work done environmentally, that's what I would ask for. Mr. President, I've said my piece, I think the members understand.
Thank you very much. We have, again, the Plum Report before us, colleagues, so with that, and it has a recommendation in the Plum Report, so we're voting yes is a yes to support Plum, no is to not support the Plum Report. Please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
That is approved. The Plum Report will be upheld. Okay? Thank you. All items will be going forthwith today. Is that the last open session item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it is.
Okay. In accordance with California state law, we will now go into closed session to discuss legal matters that are currently before the City Council. Any votes that require an open session concurrence, we will come back into open session and revote, and we will come back for the end of the meeting as well. So, thank you very much, and we will be back in a little bit. If the sergeants will please.
All right, items forty-three and forty-four require a vote that we took up in closed session. We've returned to open session. Madam Clerk, if you could please tell us the case and the settlements, Mr. City Attorney?
Item number forty-three is a settlement for $170,000 in the case of Patricia Del Rio versus the City of Los Angeles. Item forty-four is a settlement for $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we start with item number forty-three? We have a glitch in the computers again, so we're going to do oral votes, folks. Are we okay now? Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next one, please.
That is item forty-four, and that's a settlement in $15,000 in new money in the case of Anne Marie Walke versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's take those up together. Do we do an oral vote on those? Why don't we